Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission of May 20th, 2021. My name is Joan Beely, I'm the Chairwoman for the Planning and Zoning Commission. As permitted by the Governor's executive orders and indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this meeting may be attended by in-person or by remote video or telephone conference. Zoom conference access for information was provided by the Commission members, provided for the Commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to purchase. Notice on the agenda on the Towne website. For all those who are attending, I would ask you that you mute yourself if you are able to do so, so people will cut back on the background noise. Please be advised that an item, 4D, site plan application of KevKai for the new industrial building at 239 Kensington Lane is being postponed to the next meeting, scheduled for June 3rd, 2021, at the request of the applicant. I also have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another so that everyone who's listening can hear what is being said, and we have a clear record. For this reason, as necessary, when it comes time for the Commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken and then to vote on that agenda item, our Planner, Maureen Ute-See, will call the roll as needed. Also, the regular minute meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the Towne's website. New information, since the posting yesterday, will be posted tomorrow. I'm not going to ask Maureen that she take the attendance by calling the roll. Thank you.
Okay, John Michael O'Brien?
He is excused.
George Millard?
Present.
Diane Dorsey?
Here.
Timothy Sigma?
Here.
Brian Rogan?
Here.
Next is Steve Wollman, he asked for his excuse.
Okay.
Peter Zarabozzo, alternate?
And a message here from Christian Lignani that Peter Zarabozzo may be coming out late.
Okay, thank you.
Alternate Andrew Lignani?
Present.
Steve Biella Jr., alternate, and Chairman Joan Beely.
Here. Okay, thank you, Maureen. So for this evening, we have two Commissioners that have been excused. That would be Mr. Wollman and Mr. John Michael O'Brien. So I will ask then that Steve Biella be seated for the meeting, and also I'll ask Andrew Lignani to participate as well. And, uh, thank you, so long to go. All right, um, the first item would be the approval of the minutes for May 6th, 2021. First, anyone have any corrections? I think I lost my spelling, but that was about it. I myself saw it spelling on the fourth page, although these are not numbered. Um, it was very simply to the middle of the page, the typo. Um, it's supposed to be the word "if," but it just shows "was to offer to Towne" and "F" they did not want in the land trust. So that would just be a minor correction. Other than that, I had no problems with the minutes, but anyone else have any feedback?
Chairman, Commissioner Biella, why can't it actually spell "Rogan" on it?
Oh, no. So can we, is that through out, that it's spelled incorrectly?
Just the first name, it's P spelled with E.V., not P.H.
Oh, okay, so it's S.T.E.V. on, okay, so noted. Anyone else?
Just to have a comment on the formatting. I think it would be helpful if the minutes had page numbers, as the Chairwoman noted. And then also, it would be helpful to identify the agenda items, maybe in bold or with additional space somehow. I found them difficult to go through formatted the way they are.
Okay, excellent. Anyone else? And do we have a motion on the minutes?
Commissioner Rogan make a motion to approve?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second on the minutes with the adjustments or corrections? A second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Anyone else for the discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to do a roll call on the minutes, Maureen? No. All right, anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Scheduling public hearing, special permit application to Ms. Thuss, Timothy Sullivan, Esquire, for the Full Circle Golf Academy at Demming Business Park, 170 Demming Road, in the G.I. 2 Zone. It's a proposed public hearing, it's for June 17th, 2021. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 17th, 2021. Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Do we have a second? Okay, second by Mr. Sigma. Okay, further discussion on this item, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, do I have Mr. Lignani? Did I hear something? Did he cast a vote?
He might be frozen.
He's muted, Mr. Lignani?
I'm sorry, I froze, yes, aye.
Okay, don't freeze on me, I'm counting on you. All right, moving on, to new business. The special event application of John, Manager Fico, Italian Political Independent Club for an Italian club craft fair with food trucks at 16 Harding Street in the general industrial G.I. zone on August 8th, 2021. Do we have anyone here presenting for the applicant? Maureen, is there somebody online for us?
So this applicant was the one who was having trouble securing that somebody would be available. So I think if somebody's online, you can ask them to speak up, but otherwise they have to be postponed to June 3rd.
Okay.
Because they had some scheduling changes by...
Some scheduling changes, the play of the Commission. We're, we have the applicant asking for June 3rd, do we have a motion to...
I will make a motion to postpone item A to June 3rd.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sigma. Further discussion on this item, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lignani. He's rolling, he's rolling now. Okay, those opposed? Okay, special event application of Gwen McCain, Kensington Congregational Church for the annual festival on the hill, which is also known as the Lobster Roll, and the Strawberry Shortcake Festival at 312 Personal Avenue, 185 Sheldon Street, in the R11, R15 Zone, on June 12th, 2021. Is there anyone here to address this?
Yes, I am, right here, one.
Oh, yay, okay. I guess if you want to come up, or, you know, and just state your name and address for the record. There's a microphone at the end that should be on. Thank you.
I'm Gwen McCain, 90, Crater Lane, Kensington, representing Kensington Congregational Church. And this will be our seventh annual Monster Fest. The format is much the same as years past, but as our planning went this year, we weren't certain how our event would be laid out. So the layout is much the same as years past. We will have no vendors, which has happened in the past, and no five-kate road race. It will simply be a food and music festival on June 12th.
Okay, all right. Terrific. We've seen this application before in the past. So does the Commission have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan. A second. Second, by Ms. Dorsey. Further discussion on the matter, and all those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Yes, thank you, Andrew, and good luck, and look forward to seeing you there. Eight minutes? All right, good to go. All right, flipping the page. We have a site plan application of Gary Jacobs, Burland Auction Group, for an installation of a 12 by 20 foot accessory structure, storage, yeah, structure, storage shed at 1660 Burland Turnpike, property at 1660 Burland Turnpike LLC in the B.T. 1 Zone. Do we have anyone here with us? Yes, sir. To the podium if you please.
Make a walk up?
You have to take a walk up. Get those steps in. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Gary Jacobs. I am one of the owners, there are three owners, to Burland Auction Group. And we hold auctions right here in town at the Beverly Hall. And for the last, oh, I guess maybe six or seven years now. It'll be two years, and obviously, we kind of took over the Turnpike Antiques shop. It was managed by someone else previously, and they were failing, and we knew the landlord there, and we took over that shop about two years ago. The only problem we've had is we just don't have any storage. The only storage is down in the basement. And we have three owners, and all of us have bad knees, so coming up and down the stairs has become a real issue for us with the storage. So just felt if I could get onsite storage instead of renting elsewhere, it'd be a heck of a lot more convenient for us to be able to drive a truck up there and drop things off, mostly for the auction, as opposed to the antique shop.
Okay, terrific. Misses, we have the applicant before us, and we have the information. We have any questions regarding this proposal? Okay.
Planting wise, we see there's a fence that's at the back end of the building, runs along parallel north, north to south. And we've had, we've wanted, I guess, to be able to sell items behind that fence. So the building is positioned behind the fence, basically.
Okay, so we have it up on our screen here. Yeah.
Right.
All right.
So it's got a big black square is where I'm proposing.
Yeah.
And that's the fence that it runs around.
You said the shed is going to be used for storage items?
Yes.
Okay, is this, these storage items, are they currently the ones that are outside? Are you trying to organize and clean up that outside area behind that fence?
Yeah, some of that, yes. Yeah, we had a problem previously with items gravitating to the front, and it was kind of a messy looking situation. So we've done a pretty good job of moving it all behind the fence, but I'd like to be able to solidify it further. And also to be able to put items, when we do an estate, we have to clean out of a home, be able to put things in there. Usually a couple of weeks in between the time that we go pick up and we actually have an auction, to sell the items. So it has to be stored for a period of time. So that's the idea of the building.
So the items that are going to be in storage are the ones that are going to be set to go to auction?
Correct.
But they're not necessarily the ones that are sold already? Just waiting for pickup?
Waiting, waiting to be brought up to auction.
All right, waiting to be brought to auction, all right. And the structure itself, even though it's just a shed, is it, I mean, do we know what it looks like at all? I mean, was it...
I'm looking at like a quota farm, it's kind of a pre-built shed.
It's going to have like little windows on it?
It's got little windows, yeah. Doors, probably have a door front, back, for access. Has little windows in it, it looks like a little cave, basically.
Okay.
Part of the application said there was a picture that came along with it.
I don't have a picture, but...
Maureen?
Yeah, I was kind of...
It was originally, yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't get a vet, a vet? We did not receive, and I...
Well, if you look at that small cave... The shed would look like, she has to plot a farm shed, I would catch the photo.
It looks like a small cave, basically.
Yeah, but only because as I look at what we have up on the screen, it seems like you have the Burland Turnpike, and it looks like your main building will be, if I'm on the turnpike looking, it'll be to the left, but I'll have a clearer vision of where this structure is going to be.
You will.
In other words, you have it fenced off, and you have stuff behind the fence.
Right.
And then this shed is going to be behind the stuff, so it's not going to...
It will be in front of the stuff.
It's going to be, so this shed is going to be right behind the fence?
Yes, yes.
So all the stuff that's behind the fence is going to go into the shed?
Pretty much stay where it is, behind the fence.
All right, so this shed is going to be how far behind the fence? How deep behind the fence?
Pretty much parallel with it. Where is the, where are the edges of the fence? Matter of fact, I mean, it could take part of the fence over. I don't know if I have that up there.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
So Chairman, this is zoning officer. So this is the fence that was the condition of approval in the initial site plan.
Yes.
So the location that's proposed for the storage shed would be immediately behind the fence. That's basically the only spot, you can kind of put it on the yard without interfering with the front yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks, easements across the yard, and existing sanitary system at the back.
Okay.
So that's the reason for the location right here. So in, from this view that you have here and that the Zoom participants can see, you would have this view, the fence, the shed, and then the rear yard with items for sale behind it.
Okay, so, so anything that was visual from the road that was behind the fence is now actually going to be behind the shed?
Additionally obscured by the shed.
Oh.
Yes, you would definitely see the fence from the front.
And do we know what the shed looks like?
There is, now, as Maureen's speaking, there is not a photo of the shed in the planning and zoning files that I can find.
Well, I don't know if anybody's ever been to Quoter Farms, but that's basically what it is. Quoter Farm Shed, pre-built.
So this is Commissioner...
It's like a small cave garden, basically.
Are we going to be seeing the back of the shed, shed with windows? Or will we see in here, how is it oriented with re...
It'll be the back of the shed, it shouldn't be...
Should we just going to see it?
Because there's going to be a fence right in front of it.
No windows, just a blank wall?
It's kind of a blank wall.
So...
I mean, I could turn it around the other way, where there's windows towards, towards the fence, but...
Well, that might be, I guess what we're...
It's preferable to visually, it's fine with me.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out what the best, how it would be aesthetically pleasing. And I think if it was just a wall that's sideways behind the fence, I don't know that that would be attractive.
Okay, I mean, they build them to spec, whatever you want, basically. So if I want windows both front and back, I can have it built that way. The access to the interior would be around the back. Not where the fence is, it would be around the back, how is...
But couldn't you have your access... But couldn't you have your access, so you go through the fence and you like take a right and the door's right there? I mean.
Yes, you could do that, yeah, as far as the door is concerned, yeah. That would be on the end of the building. One of the two ends. So it would be on the, uh, let's say 12, 12-foot length section, you could have access there. Probably be the best actually.
You know, Maury and Adam, I don't know, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to hold something up in the sense that it would be an addition and a welcome step in the right direction of getting that business more organized and look appealing. Um, would it be, would it, could the commission basically uh, with respect to the storage building, give it the blessing? With staff review and placement and of that shed to lean more on yourself and Adam than zoning officer?
Totally acceptable. I did just find the shed very, I'm sorry.
Oh, you did find it?
Did find it, I'm gonna.
Okay, he's gonna pass around. In the meantime, Mr. Edge also has a question.
So that is fine with, with um, staff, we're perfectly comfortable doing that and using your comments as guidance. Um, the location of this shed is very um, specific because of those constraints on the property. Um, I think Adam will bring that map back up, maybe. And you can see that there's a um, sewer easement going through the septic system. And the application came um, through because it actually was a application for a building permit that started and we said, well, it's commercial zone, it has to come with PNC. But we also spent, Adam particularly, spent a lot of time um, figuring out where on the lot it fits, where it doesn't interfere with health districts requirements nor the sewer easement. So as far as shifting the location, um, that I believe is pretty much the only location it fits in. The aesthetics of it and the um, orientation, you know, things like that, we can certainly handle. One of my comments was wanting to be making sure that the approval, or rather asking that the approval continue to include a continuation of the requirements from the previous approval for the use to be at that location in the first place. And I'd like to read um, those conditions to you were, are that the items on the outside back of the property will be sold, not stored. So those are the outside items. The property will be neatly maintained and front fencing is presented to the commission. So the fencing was installed, but those other items be carried into this approval as well.
And I think that's.
Relates to the storage.
And I think Mr. Edge also.
Mr. Edge also, one more thing, I just need to copy my card. I'm going right, sorry. No problem, I just want to mention one thing if I could. Chris Edge, economic development director. Um, if we're gonna have this beautiful shed, is it possible, this is a question for both the applicant and whatever we just say in front of us. Would the fence go like this to the sides of the shed instead of in front of the shed? It's gonna be a nice shed. The reason they build those sheds is so it looks nice to the outside and might break up a big white fence. I just, I throw it out as a concept, I mean, I think it's great to have a home to grow.
It'd be one of.
If, if, if it's possible, I know the setback may be an issue, so that may be a way to get, uh, still get the beauty of the shed. He can still use it and we kind of break up the big fence. So, I think it's a great idea, just my two cents.
So the shed is at the setback line, as it's the fence, and it was a condition of your approval?
This is Commissioner Miller, and I appreciate Chris's comments, but I mean, it's a short, big fence, um, I think it's gonna make a big difference. And if it was a big tall fence and whatever, I would agree with you, but with a big fence, I don't think it's gonna make all that much difference.
I just don't want anyone to think it's a tiny home. No one else made that point.
So. Why, why very, very.
So this is Commissioner Miller again, based on looking at the, the shed, and it seems like it has a side door garage, I would imagine that's your primary entrance. It already starts, so I would ask that it be oriented with the front of the shed facing the Berlin Turnpike, I think would look a lot better aesthetically.
This, this is zoning officer, I'm not sure it will geometrically work rotated, is it all?
It's not rotated, if you look at the picture, it has a side.
All the long ones, the side door, oh, I see.
Right. They're 12 foot.
I see, okay.
Check that, probably wouldn't you be using the big, the front, front door, it's a side garage door.
There's an opening in that fence, towards the building, which is where we would go ahead and add this.
Okay. Yeah, I was sending it to George to look at, because I thought it might help with his comment, but.
I saw him already.
Oh, I know, but. Right, so what's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comment.
I am Brian and motion, and Diane Joycey has the second. And do we have further discussion, any questions? Andrew, any questions from looking over the way so?
No, I have no questions. Uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, so let's move on. Okay, so all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And um, Maury wants to.
George Miller.
Aye.
Diane Joycey.
Aye.
Tim Stignot.
Aye.
Brian Rogan.
Aye.
Angela Nanny.
Aye.
Steve Yeller Jr.
Aye.
And Chairman Deles.
Aye.
Can I get a repeat of the who first and second?
Yeah. Brian.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is item D, but that has.
Go on.
Oh, okay. The next item is item uh, D, but that has been postponed uh, by the request of the applicant, so we're gonna move into the public hearings. And I believe that historian has the call for the public hearings. To be read, Andrew, go ahead.
Down in Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of public hearings. Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, May 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join and participate in open public hearings in person or remotely by video or telephone as provided below. The following public hearing will be held, at which time an opportunity will be given to those who wish to be heard relative to the following applications. A, proposed amendment of Timothy Sullivan Esquire to amend Section 6C to Special Design District Special Permit Uses. B, special permit slash site plan applications of Task of Ford, Connecticut, for a 32,495 foot square, uh, square foot, one-story building to be used as a truck repair facility at 250 Webster Square Road at, and 73 Woodlawn Road. C, priority LLC special permit slash site plan applications of priority LLC for construction of two new buildings, totally 25,400 square feet and related parking, drives and site improvements at block 115, lot 28, Orchard Road in the Plant Industrial Two, this is the PI Two Zone. Contractor shops per BZR, uh, 7E3M and, I'm sorry, yeah, 73M and 12 and 13.
Do we have anyone here? Uh, well, okay, uh, the first item that is in the public hearing is a special permit use site plan of application of Paul Prior, Priority LLC for construction of a 14,000 square foot building and an 11,400 square foot building and related site improvements at MAP 21 dash four, lot 115, lot 28, zero Orchard Road in the Plant Industrial Two, this is the PI Two Zone. Contractor shops per BZR, uh, 7E3M and, I'm sorry, yeah, 73M and 12 and 13. Do we have anyone here for the applicant? Hi, Mr. Bovee, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Uh, Bart Bovee, professional engineer working now for H. Colmas Sons at Plainsville. I'm here to represent the applicant for these two uh, items. Uh, priority LLC, Paul Prior was one of the principals of property, is available. About to answer any questions. Uh, we're here again for the site plan application of the property. It listed as Berlin Turnpike, it's actually on Orchard Road. And also for the special permit for allowing contractor shops within the Plant Industrial Two Zone. Uh, I'll talk about that in a little bit. Uh, the property is known as uh, lot 28, lot 115, MAP uh, 21 dash four. As I said, located in Orchard Road immediately, just to be on Berlin Turnpike site. The overall parcel is 8.25 acres and the area proposing for development is about 3.2 acres. Is that uh, similar? Uh, the sketch you see of the plan before you now is the overall piece of property. You can see the development area on the right-hand side, it's located next to the Berlin Turnpike. It's the former location of Sunny Borders. They had some hoop houses located in this area, so that site is pretty much stripped clean. Basically, continued education. Uh, we're looking to develop a portion of property from Orchard Road back to the back clearing line. The rest of the property located to the left, they got towards Orchard Road and the south, is all wooded and at present time, we're not proposing any activity in that area. Uh, it says property is undeveloped, enhanced of existing hoop houses, there really were no services for it on the site. There is a sanitary sewer that's been extended from Tolgate Road up through the back of the uh, the property, or the developed area that presently serves Tyler Equipment, which is located to the north of the site. Uh, recently, we care about some of the land of the property in Orchard Road. They sent sewers from those lots back up within those areas. Part of the condition of the sale was generating some unit maps to the uh, Berlin Water Control uh, Commission. They had never received those and it was kind of living in limbo, so the part of that closing and part of the uh, discussion with them is to provide them with maps, so uh, so we will work with them in developing those. Also, as part of that 50-foot strip over Tolgate Road, there's a logistic old dirt road that used to service and allowed some of the trucks, I guess, from Sunny Border to access that area. We're gonna totally abandon that road, we're not gonna use that road at all, starts the development. All the activity will come off of Orchard Road. As you remember, oh, six months, six months ago, we were before this commission put out a schedule review of plan, and originally we had a driveway entrance back up where the original driveway uh, came off Orchard Road uh, on the north end of the site. Based on conversations with this commission and some of the concerns about killing, including the truck activity off of Tyler Equipment, we have shifted our driveway now as far south as possible on Orchard Road, in that arrow that Adam's pointing to. It's as far south as we can go because there's an offer restriction uh, that we're maintaining around those residential properties to the south of that site, until we brought this right over to where, to where you've been on there. I went out there in the morning, uh, we kind of observed traffic through there to make sure it adequately backed up. If you could flip to uh, C2. Maybe that's enough in that area. You'll see some cars lined up. We've uh, basically with this driveway in this location, we can achieve a few of eight vehicles lined up at that stop sign. And that eliminates the potential confusion that we had with the Tyler Equipment trucks leaving the site. Uh, and try to make that turn. So in vehicles, we did some observations for an hour during peak uh, warning times, the maximum queue we could see was about eight vehicles, but it averaged about three or four vehicles. So we feel that that shifting of that driveway to the south really eliminates 99% of potential backups starting on the day. And light cycle there, I think we timed that at 90 seconds or so, so. Worst case, a car is gonna have to wait in that right way about minute, minute and a half. The exit maybe goes from another side of the light. Uh, but our proposal is two buildings. One to the north of the site, maybe zoom on a little bit, there we go. Uh, that rectangle on the left hand side, that's the first phase of development. That building is 11,400 square feet and will be the home of uh, Priority Electric. They will move from the Britney, move their business to that area. We're proposing approximately 27 spaces in front of that building. Uh, there's garage doors around the rear, we'll look at the elevation then a little bit. But to the rear of the site, there are three overhead doors that allow trucks to uh, enter and exit, you know, service type trucks. So they can load and unload their stuff inside the vehicle, inside the assembly. The back of the building will be gravel. Uh, and then to the south side, there's a, a loading dock located in that area with the turnaround area. That'll be used for a random large truck delivery. Uh, they don't have a lift system on their, on the facility, so what they're gonna do is take those at, those, those truck deliveries, which maybe happen every one or two to four months, or weeks. Uh, and they will uh, back them up into that loading dock, and that would be, otherwise, this is gonna be a very clean site. Uh, we're not anticipating any uh, outdoor storage of electrical equipment. Uh, we're trying to maintain a clean site, you can see the landscaping that faces out toward uh, the Orchard Road. Uh, we will see that in the elevations. And then that buffer in the, what do you call it? It's the 50-foot buffer off the residential properties. Uh, we're basically enhancing those areas where those exist trees, and most of those are large spruce, black trees along there. So even in the winter, the, uh, it's very hard to look through and see those residential properties, that one existing residential home and a future residential home. But we are supplementing with uh, with trees to help that, and then we're putting right off the edge of the uh, off the edge of the road race that comes in, a smaller rail fence to kind of dress it up a little bit. And kind of put a collar up between, we'll, about, maybe about 10 feet off the road, and we're gonna put the fence or have the offering. So it won't be maintained at all, or natural, and there won't be the uh, potential for uh, uh, the second building we dislocated to the north, is the second building, we're showing up for about 14,000 square feet. That's gonna be used for future rentals. Uh, we don't have a tenant at this time. Uh, we know the requirements, the PI Zone. Uh, we're hoping that the uh, the ability for a special permit to allow the uh, contractor shops within that area will allow this to be maintained with similar type of businesses, clean businesses. There'll be no storage outside, it'll all be with inside. Uh, basically small, little incubator type units, so they got a small office, a front door, and then uh, the, the shop itself. But we're anticipating three to four units, really depends on what the demand is and where we're going from there. Uh, and that building will have 32 spaces. So the goal is for the first phase, it's the driveway end, go out to the first building over on the left, build the parking, build the loading area. And then, as we move forward, it could be as soon as six months, it could be two, two years. But then they'll build a parking area around that, will finish off that site in the throats of the trash. And it says sanitary sewer is available on the site. Uh, as it was run through, we are gonna extend public water, public water is located on Orchard Road. We're gonna bring that in, we're gonna set a hydrant back where the driveway turns, uh, the circle buildings, so uh, we'll have adequate fire protection in there. And there's also gas, we'll get in Orchard Road, and we intend on picking up that. Uh, I will say this about the, the uh, the special permits, as we are providing the public damage. This property is located in the PI Two Zone, and we're asking for relief, special permit use for the contractor shop, shops, that's I, M. Actually, it's from number 7E3M. Uh, and we're looking for a reason that. We, we feel that the contractor shop is very uh, very clean. Uh, it's gonna be as far away from the uh, the residential portions of property as possible, and to the north, where you can see the line in the bear area. But it is Tyler Equipment, it does have an address on the Berlin Turnpike, and it's a really open wide area. Uh, we feel even the construction of these buildings may be at some of the noise. Where's that yard, those constantly.
Seven or 7:30 in the morning, nighttime.
Our site is gonna be very quiet, a few cars coming in at, you know, peak hours, during the morning and evening. Uh, for the business in there, and then be a random truck delivered, but that's about it, we're not anticipating cars gonna be in and out all day. Uh, so uh, you know, we're not gonna be a major generator of traffic based on the use of the turnpike, but we feel that special permit for this use is oriented as it is compatible with the site. It is a plant industrial site that abus the turnpike. And this is, this, this use is compatible with that site, this is on the turnpike, where you not, may not be wanted in specially designed plant industrial type developments that offer variety of businesses, type of business that's been going to the site with access to the turnpike. It's gonna be a little bit different than some of your, yeah, so, so that PI Two. So with that PI two zone in place, we feel this is a very appropriate type of business. It's not really impact the, really not impact the adjacent residential areas. Any worse than some of the other permitted by uses within that zone. It's not part of the set. It could be the first one. This is a rendering of the first phase building that Priority Electrical going through. The upper view with the three doors is actually the back of the building. Those doors are hidden from main view and those will be the ones that will have the service trucks entering and needing to pick up their daily materials. The second view down is the view that you'll get from the, from the street. They're going to use a dark, sorry, a ash gray type siding. And they're going to have the stone in the air runs down the hill. The windows are going to be trimmed in white. And that wrap around is going to be the entire foreside of the building. If you scroll down a little bit more, you'll see the one side of the building that's facing to the south. It's got the door. That's for the loading dock. And then this other view is from the north side, the Tyler Equipment side. And that'll have an employee door to the back and then the wrap room offices, a left hand side. And you can see the layout of the building if you want to just scroll over to the side. Basically, we've got the office type uses for the business in the front. And then the back is all going to be storage warehouse. So again, it's a clean use, there's plenty of interior space to store most of the equipment that they're going to be using on the site. And there won't be the opportunity for them to decide when they want to store stuff outside. And the doors are going to be to the rear. The other building where we don't have details will be similarly equipped with, you know, siding and doors and garage doors. But those doors will be faced, those front doors and the garage doors will be facing towards the driveway. Well, I talked about everything. I think I didn't talk about is drainage. And I know I was talking to Mike today, and I don't know if Maureen's got comments from the committee. But I will say we're trying to utilize the existing site to replicate our drainage. Maybe C three. To kind of replicate existing areas. The front third of that first building right up near Orchard Road, you'll see a long cigar shaped type area. That's going to be a water quality filter. At the present time, the typical soil profile is about six inches to the top soil, about a foot of silt. It's not clay, but it's really just a heavy silt. And then below is all sand. What we're trying to do is penetrate into the sand layer so we can get infiltration into the ground. Now let it run over and then in existing site conditions. So that first cigar is going to be a groundwater infiltration area. The water will run to that and heat enough and wide enough, water will enter that and percolate down into the ground. Just to the north, there is a state head wall that goes under the Tyler Equipment driveway. That's the, that's the release point, but we don't feel, we know we're not going to increase any water flow off of that front third of the project. If you go up further to the nick area towards the other building, you'll see a drainage system that relies heavily on infiltration. We've got two areas on that driveway and across the parking lot that are going to be used as infiltration. Pipes with perforated pipe. Those inverts are raised, so we're going to have water open to those pipes like percolate up. I mean, another reason we're going to use infiltration. And then up in the far corner, the stormwater management area that will take any overflow from the stormwater, hold it back. We'll meter solely out to the north. There's an existing natural little valley that the water now goes. We're going to discharge it here there. But again, we're going to be reducing the amount of stormwater through our site and out to that little area. Plus, we're going to gain some new materials that are also the flat site. So we have to create some insulation to move water around, but also get sediment ground. So that's one of the reasons we've put that there to get some gravel. But while we haven't figured infiltration in that area, I'm sure it's infiltration. We're showing the landscaping around the building. We're showing the lighting on the roadways that illuminate the main road and then some parking areas, the areas around the buildings themselves will be done by a wall mounted lights. And I think I've talked too long. Do you have any questions? Oh, we didn't say some sad comments before I talked in the mic. And we've got no problem. The only real comment there was, was a note from the weapons commission, agent for the commission, and requested a note on the plans indicating that we're not going to be impacting any weapons. At the time I saw that comment, I didn't really want to advise all the plants who wants a little note. But I don't know if Maureen's got comments from the committee or not. But other than that, we've covered everything.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bovee. And I know that we're in the public hearing, so at this point, I will ask the public, is there anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding his application? This is the time to do so. If you are interested and you're here in person, I would ask that you raise your hand. We'll acknowledge you and you can come up to the podium, state your name and address and make your comments. Also for those who are online, if you wish to address the commission regarding this applicant, you would basically let us know by raising your hand or whatever. And we'll be happy to acknowledge you and give you the opportunity to address the commission. So right now we have at the podium, Mr. Chris Edge.
Hello there. Chris Edge, two forty Hendon Road. Thank you, commission members. I've known and working with the prior brothers for some time. They are a longtime Berlin family who's had their successful business in an adjacent town. The project will allow them to move their operations to Berlin as well as to build an additional fourteen thousand square feet of badly needed industrial space for lease. The economic development commission was, commission was very pleased to see another Berlin business, to see another Berlin family moving their business to town. They voted unanimously to support this project. They were also very happy to see that the natural growth was being kept in the back between the residential and the industrial area, which we thought was vitally important with the existing neighborhood back there. Very excited that they're going to be coming here to town. And the nice thing too is this is going to be multi-generational as the sons are going to be taking over. Hopefully if these guys can retire at some point. But the plan essentially is to have the kids take over, keep it going, growing. And I'm thrilled to be here and support it tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raj. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Yes, ma'am. I would just ask that you come up and use the podium.
Hi, I'm Marion Boniuto, one twenty-one Tolgate Road in Berlin. My question is about traffic study, a state traffic study has been done on the driveways for the projected development. And concerned that, note that there would be not access to Tolgate Road from the back road that comes through the property. He stated that it wouldn't be moved, but would there be somebody firm that in the maker's situation where they wanted to put in the housing, they were going to only use that for emergency fire exit or entrance for the fire trucks? So that the trucks coming from the establishment would not be using that instead of fighting traffic on the turnpike?
All right. All right, terrific. Thank you. And I believe that as far as the abandonment or whatever of that roadway that goes from the, the old, that our property to Tolgate Road. I believe the statement was made by Mr. Bovee that it, I believe, okay, hold on. Technical issues, doesn't want to. I believe Mr. Bovee had stated that there would be like an abandonment to the town for that. For that, for that roadway right away that goes to Tolgate Road. Is that not correct?
Well, I want to clarify, we're planning on abandoning the road and not use the road. The road is owned and fee by Priority LLC with the purchase. They give you a little history. That's a fifty foot strip that was generated as part of a potential future subdivision of that. And they developed the first phase for the lots on Tolgate Road. And then that second phase never happened. So we just left that for future use. So it's not a public road. It's a private driveway that basically goes about that. If the commission wants that changed or something like that, even though we abandoned it, there is no intent to use that for anything at all.
All right, that would be noted on the record as well.
That would be noted on the record.
All right. And then I don't know if the water department or.
Well, we've got to give them an easement through there because that, the sewer line comes through there. So we have to give them an easement through there. But I don't, I don't believe they need to access that. And if we put a gate and a chain on it or something, they can have copy of the key or something like that. When they come into the Priority Electric building, because that's. This total access. And with regard to traffic, so you don't see this as a major traffic generator at all. All of the FBC requirements. The generation of traffic, we, you know, we showed you the queue lining up, which was a concern. The generation of traffic is going to be basically the employees and maybe a few customers coming in. I mean, I look at some of the other type of uses that are permitted within the PI two zone, like professional offices and dentists and stuff like that. They're probably generating more traffic with people coming in, going for appointments and meetings and stuff like that. This type of use, generally people are going to come in during the day part of the car to work, take another truck out and then reverse the process. You're not going to have a constant turnover of vehicles through the area. So we're probably generating less traffic than we would have if we looked at some of those uses in the PI two zone.
So I gather then that this business is not, does not offer a sales room?
No. No retail at all in these boats.
Okay. Anyone else in the public or online who wishes to comment about this project, in or against? Okay. Yes. All right, I'll have to ask you to go back to the podium, I'm sorry. It's just that we need to do this for the public record.
Right. Being a truck repairer, what size trucks? I have seen tractor trailers come out of that driveway onto Tolgate Road. Okay, or come through there. But the other thing is welding. Is the welding, will that require delivery of the air supply or, you know, your welding?
Okay, as far as the nature of the business, I think it's more electrical work. I mean, I'm not sure what specifically Priority Electrical does, but I assume it's installation in buildings that have to be built or redone or updated. But I mean, actually the applicant could, or Mr. Bovee, maybe you could tell us what the nature of the business is.
The business is a home of contract. So I mean, he has a setup of equipments for his fleet of vehicles that go out and service the collateral. They probably abandoned large trucks or something like that and that take care of that stuff. You know, you can't compare it to the, to the Sunny Borders operation. Because number one, the driveway is in the wrong location. And number two, they ran a lot more trucks of a shorter size, bigger than the vans that move plants and stuff between the various sites in the town. So you have a lot more truck traffic generated from Sunny Borders. The only thing that we may have is the odd larger truck. It's, it won't be an over road type, you know, mobile, long haul vehicle that will drop off and use that loading dock. But I think in what, two to four weeks, something like that? It's not, it's not an invasive type of activity, but it's better than running twenty trucks and deliver stuff that maybe one delivery of one line to get on the site. And they're going through the expense of putting in a loading area that will handle that area without doing many, many movements and making a lot of noise to make that turning movement. So they're trying to back end the unloading, get off the site, the driveway is moving further to the south. So you're not going to have the problems that Tyler Equipment have with their driveway located kind of right smack dab in the middle of the island.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I guess, yes.
This is Paul Prior.
Welcome, Mr. Prior.
How are you doing? Paul Prior, Priority LLC. We are going to ban in that right away. We're going to put a gate across it. It'll be really for fire. But we do not have any plans and will not allow cars, trucks, vehicles to utilize that. We're just not. So there will be a gate across it with a chain or something, but for fire or for emergency. And trucks that come in, they deliver something once or twice, you know, a month. So that's it. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. All right, I'm going to turn to the commission and ask them if they have any questions of the applicant. Who would like to go first? Yes, Ms. Jorsey.
Thank you, Bart. Could you address some of the site work that has already taken place on the property? I'm curious about the front drainage area that you described, the cigar to the front of the property. Are some of the established trees going to be left there? Or do they have to be removed in order to accommodate that drainage?
We try to put that filter kind of at the edge of the drip line of trees. And I know my clients spend out those trees, but it's kind of cleaned it out, so it looks a little more presentable. But most of that area is going to be outside the drip line. Maybe, maybe the edge of it's going to be, but we know most of the roots are under that drip line. So we really don't intend on disturbing too much of that with this.
So what's, what's still there is probably going to stay there?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it sort of softens the transition.
Right.
Between the industrial.
It kind of keeps the character of the brother too.
Yeah, yeah. And on your plans, the discussion about the driveway, I think it would be probably helpful if on the plan, it's identified that that driveway will be abandoned or will be for fire or emergency access only.
We can make sure that it's properly labeled in the very spots. Obviously, the area until Orchard Road is going to be eliminated, the close up is going to recur. But if you go back, we can add that.
And I see on the plan, there is a note, existing temporary hoop house to be relocated to rear of proposed building number one. And then it shows an approximate location of the relocated existing temporary hoop house. Could you clarify exactly what's meant by temporary? Because I know a greenhouse is not a permanent structure.
What he's done is he's done some storage, temporary storage of the property and that and that. So while they're putting up the building, he wants to get that out of the way. So he's going to temporarily relocate it from the back so we keep stuffy stored. And then once he builds, puts up the building, you're like, why do you know?
So that comes down when the certificate is, the document is basically is.
The building is.
And then there's, I think it's part of your phase two with the double dumpster enclosure. I didn't notice it. I know you have dumpsters at the back. There's no discussion about the rear dumpster screening, but your phase two dumpster screening is talking about vinyl fencing?
Right. The dumpster location for the first phase is located behind the building. Some of the women's got to see it instead of the police who take the trash out. But we did call out vinyl screening around that dumpster with the pad and stuff. So it's going to be standing, kind of sitting out off the side of the building.
Can't do better than vinyl?
You don't think, do you?
No, but something makes you more attractive.
It's going to be on the side of the building. You won't really see it from the road. You know, from the turnpike or Orchard Road. And vinyl, you can point wood gets damaged, trucks hit it, you know, the dumpster. But what were you thinking?
Well, I'm honestly, I would have to look at our regulations to remember if they even address it in this particular zone. But like the restaurants have to have dumpster enclosures that are similar to the structure itself.
Firstly, I think the dumpster enclosure is going to look better than probably the building itself.
Oh my.
I have a problem with vinyl, it's either right or the building. It's just, it's just the nature of the dumpster enclosure. I mean, I don't want to draw attention to the dumpster, but if you, if the commission wants to see something more compatible, if there's an issue, staff will maybe review it before they install it, then they can see.
Yeah, if staff reviews it, that would be fine. I just, it's hard to envision it when you describe it as vinyl.
I assume this is quite a chailing fence who puts glass in.
Right, well, that's what I'm envisioning.
Well, this is, this is going to be, this is going to be vinyl fence around the outside.
Oh, like, like light of stockade?
Right.
Like an eight foot.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Now I understand.
I should have said that first.
Why, you're thinking vinyl?
Why did you not say that before?
I couldn't figure out why.
Good heavens.
Why?
I, I, well, I was envisioning like the anchor glass. So, okay, and then as far as the... Buckering between the residential properties and this property. The houses along Tollgate and the ones farther, I guess, south Orchard, is it south? The plan isn't showing landscaping, but are those areas...
All between what's well over a hundred feet away from this property. It's all truly wooded. The only opening there is where the driveway is.
And the burn. Now, for Tollgate, Tollgate, there's a twenty-five foot burn with...
I see, I can see the topography is a little pilly with the mapping, so I kind of...
We haven't really focused on Tollgate because you can see the development there, it's far away. You can see the Tollgate properties, and then there's the, there's the, except that the buffer line way out to the side. So we're at least a hundred and fifty feet away from that property, and that's all wooded.
Okay. Okay, anyone else on the commission, yes? Mr. Zingler?
They already addressed it, they'll go put a fence or gate up on that fifty foot. I'm sorry?
No, you have to use the mic.
Right.
Well, now I gotta hold it.
Yeah.
So to go that fifty foot right away, you try to go gate. Just, there is a standard town tape they use for around parks.
We'll put in whatever type of...
With the chain on it and the lock is all locked the same, they're all the same key throughout the town. So the park department will lock it and I'll put a chain.
We will work with that.
And you stated that the trucks would be put inside during night?
For the both park, park and back.
I'm just, for your safety right now with the catalytic converters, it's all over a place and stuff that...
We know.
Park it inside.
No.
We have it over, we know twice.
Oh, that's bad. Okay, anyone else on the commission? I'm looking this way here, Mr. Vale, and your Mr., oh, Mr. Miller. Commissioner's line.
That's hard, I guess I'll hold it.
I know.
Commissioner Miller, just a quick question. In the event, you know, you didn't do phase two for a couple of years or six months, would you do anything to that parcel of land? I mean, right now, there's going to be weeds.
We don't anticipate it, but if it's not developed, I think the plan is at least put foundation in at first. But if they don't do anything, I'm sure Mr. Prior will take it.
I have a couple of questions. Again, because this, you're going basically from industrial onto the residential, and just in, in the hopes of preserving that residential atmosphere once you get off the Turnpike onto Orchard Road. I would like to see some really enhanced landscaping to the front of the building. Also, you talked about lighting, and I know you're going to have building lighting. Are you going to have lighting for that driveway? And if so, I want to be just cautious of the houses that are in that area so that the lights aren't on all the time.
The lights, these are electricians, so they know this guy.
Well, yeah, you're the guys.
So those lights are going to be there, they are basically up the driveway, about three or four of them, I think, with social locations.
But they would be turned down so that...
Yeah.
They're not going to flood over to the neighbors.
Well, actually, I put them on...
There's one, there's...
Side, that's when they hit towards the Tyler equipment, you know.
I imagine they'll have security cameras too, which is always nice.
They'll be on a timer, so they're not going to be on all night. They'll be dusk to probably nine to five, or some of it earlier than that.
They'll go on it when it gets dark, and go off when it gets light, but they will not be hitting the neighbors at all.
And there is a note on the plan that all those lights be down, and they should be able to meet each other.
Okay.
Jason Profferts.
Alright, I noticed that there's a lot of exclamation to the back of that lot. Now, I see that you, because your phase one is going to go back there. What have you done to stabilize that, you know, that you've cut into, or it looks like you, or has been?
Well, yeah, basically, it was asked you before, all he's really done is clean off the trees and take over the material there. But that's kind of a work in progress, you know, in waiting the couple, three months for the public hearing and the center board to clear. He's got a little anxious to go up and some work.
Yeah, he's been playing in the dirt. But my, my point is, is that it has to be stabilized.
It does need to be stabilized.
Because if we do get a heavy rainstorm, it's going to be quite the mess.
The other thing, we need, it would be at least put some foundation.
Questions for the rest of the commission? Okay.
Nobody else outside, not yet? Loudspeakers?
I don't believe there's any loudspeakers in the second row.
No E A system, nothing like that?
I bring a cell phone.
Got to ask the question.
I have a question, what are the hours, what are the hours of the operation?
What are you?
Seven to four thirty.
Is that Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Anyone else on the commission? And Mr. Legnani, I know that you're online, but do you have any questions?
No, I do not, Madam Chair. All the questions I have were answered.
See what happens when you don't come in?
And I should note for the record, we did send a notice about Jason Profferts, by twenty feet gate staff receipts for those, and also acknowledge the fact that he did put a...
The only other comment I have, and this is just myself, I'm just trying to picture what these buildings are going to look like. Alright, so they're basically just metal buildings, and just a couple of windows down below and storage in the back. I'm just, is there going to be landscaping for the buildings?
Yes, we...
We're going to break it up somehow?
We've been getting ground planted in so long up there, front of that building.
Yeah.
Nothing on the side into the view, because, but we're trying to put money into the public side of that.
And the way it is, the natural burn, the people on Tollgate Road are not going to see the back of these buildings. So they're not going to get up and go, oh my God, it's metal.
I don't believe I could sit down and go...
They will never see it, even in the winter time.
I'm quoting them on that too.
Yes.
I, I will, I will. I, I, I just, it's just a very important site, and I can see that it has a cause and a reason. I just want to make sure that the neighborhood is not impacted by it. I'd rather be a good addition to Berlin and not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And that's the intention that drives me. So I hope you understand that some of the... Other commissioners, we're still in the public hearing, going to the public. Do you have any questions or anyone hearing none? Alright, so what's the pleasure of the commission? Oh, wait, Maureen, the most important one, our acting town planner, comments then.
So we do have the comments that were distributed from, and Mr. Bovee mentioned them, such as the wetlands agent asking for the certified statement with regard to no activity with the field located wetlands. Police Department comments that I'd like to include in the motion that you might determine to make, which includes specifically with regard to handicap parking stalls, their compliance, and installation of a stop sign and stop bar at the exit drive was recommended. By the way, you did...
We showed those, and then you said we should put those in.
So I, I just, you know...
Okay, is it, when you, when you say that, is that the abandoned right away that goes out to Tollgate Road that you're talking about?
No, this is for their exit driveway, onto Orchard Road, but he wanted a stop bar there for safety. And they said, they did propose it, but it was also a recommendation of the police.
I don't think he usually gets it.
Again, I want to touch on the exit drive to Tollgate Road. The regulations do call for the residential driveways out to residential areas not to be used by commercial vehicles or commercial traffic anyhow for access, so that would become also a zoning violation. So should that gate somehow disappear and it be reversible, that's enforceable that way as well, besides the presumed condition of approval. He also mentioned that there is the sewer easement going through there, regardless, water control permitting and connection fees is all required as well as they are with any, any development. But we like to put that into the comments. Talked about the store, that door area. And noting, because there is signage shown on the building, that signage was not given to us as a specific review. It's just seem more a rendering with the signage on it. So just notation that any signage shall require set separate building permits and zoning review and compliance with the regulations for the zone. And your comments that you all like that.
Yeah, and also, not only is there going to be, are they planning on signage on the road?
So they would be allowed a freestanding sign, one freestanding sign for the site, and wall signs for the tenants.
We have shown a sign location on it.
Right, you saw a sign location for a priority, you don't have dimensions and details, exactly. And that's fine, typically have not been, are not proposed at this time in an application. But I do always like to suggest that the owner of the property think about a signage program for his tenants if they have a multiple use, multiple tenants see and rebuilding, that they consider a signage program where they'll get some consistency of style placement and design of the site, while still allowing their tenants to have individual logos and whatnot.
And they may also want to think about the neighborhood there, so it might want to be something that looks not so much like industrial site, but more like residential site, especially if there's a plan to put something toward the end, you know, the entrance way on Orchard Road. I hope that they would take it into account, to something that's going to blend in with the neighborhood and not be something that's going to draw a line, so to speak. I think, Bart, you're nodding, so I understand the setting, so, okay, thank you. Alright, anything else, Maureen?
And just, well, I can't find the written comment from our town engineer. He, we did discuss this today, he did say he had looked at it, he was fine with it, he had spoken with Mr. Bovee, and actually was enjoying the drainage system. He said he kind of liked the way the drainage was.
He was happy.
Yeah, yeah, interested in, in the drainage system. Thought it was a good idea.
Alright.
That was my takeaway, it's not written.
Alright, we are in the public hearing, so any other questions, questions? Do we have a motion or a notion, or who's going to go for it?
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing by Ms. Georgey, do we have a second?
I'll start your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Robby, for the discussion, for all this, however. Do you need to roll call on that?
Not for those, I just, Mr. Legnani, I'm not sure, did you have a...
Can I just have you pass your vote, Mr. Legnani?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, we just, I want to make sure that...
I might, I might have cut, I might have cut out, Madam Chair, I apologize.
Still with us, that's great, okay, thank you. Alright, so moving on to the next item in public hearing, proposed text amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations to implement the self maintenance wire to add section six C two commercial zones, special design districts, special permit uses. I is previously reserved section six C two B stores for shops for the conduct of personal service businesses, and new would be two, section six C two H schools, operating for profits, studios of dance, photography, graphic, design, painting, or similar artistic endeavors. Okay, I'm glad to hear it, Attorney Sullivan. Alright, looking forward to your explanations.
Yes, thank you. Attorney Tim Sullivan of the law firm, Wisconsin Sullivan. The proposal for a text amendment is to section six C two of the regulations, the special design district, S P D D. The origin or genesis of this proposal was by client's desire to lease property that he owns in twelve fifty-one Berlin Turnpike, which is the northeast corner of the Berlin Turnpike and the Old Town Road intersection. To a tenant who wants to open a gay spa. What I'd like to do at this point is just, I don't have a handout.
Yes, please.
What you have is, the handout shows the town zoning map, kind of a large area of town zoning map, which shows the property issue. And the third page is actually raised upon from the property that you like that client's property. This is an old candy store, the old building in the corner of Old Town Road and Berlin Turnpike. The property seems very appropriate for this type of use, I'll explain to you. But for whatever reason, personal services was not included in the permitted uses or the special permitted uses of the S P D D zone. The initial proposal is for section six C two B, which is a reserved section to be amended, to allow personal services. There are about a dozen parcels that comprise the S P D D zone, all located within the so-called Golden Triangle. I think the intent was to promote, well, I know the intent was to promote the combining of these parcels to a regional center. And in fact, that's just the caption on the zone. They have this special design district, S P D D, regional center of the, of the actual zone. Cut makeup is somehow lost in the shuffle. And in my mind, the baby was thrown out with the bathwater. One concern I have with the proposed text change is that it may not be broad enough, and I'll review the zoning rates. And when I say the baby was thrown out with the bathwater, you know, personal services, for instance, was not included in the S P D D zone. And perhaps that's entirely appropriate for a regional five hundred thousand square foot or fifty thousand square foot structure that someday may be built on the Golden Triangle. And in fact, was true in nineteen eighty-seven, I don't know if anybody remembers, some commissioners may remember. Actually, had a mall crew on that site back in nineteen eighty seven, which included a people mover. That the parking lot was actually separate from the structure. And there was a people mover that moved the pedestrian traffic from the parking lot over to wetlands into, into the mall. But that was never built, the property has remained vacant at this time, not, not vacant, but undeveloped except for the properties right along the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, there's a little motel, there's a client's property, there's, there's D N L Automotive, um, there's, there's, there's a few properties along there which, which really are conducive to the SPDB zone. Some of them are in fact non-conforming, uh, they made non-conforming by the S, adoption of the SPDB zone. But to go over some of the zones which allow, uh, personal services and would be the plant shopping A zone, PSA. They allow stores and shops for the conduct of personal service businesses. They also allow for-profit schools, I'll get to the for-profit schools aspect in a second. Plant shopping B, uh, PSB, uh, special permit uses, allow for retail stores and shops for the conduct of personal business services and also for-profit schools. So in both the plant shopping A and the plant shopping B, these uses are for that. PSA being by, by right and PSB being by special permit, and that's the proposal tonight. It's for this to be by special permit under the SPDB zone. And the general commercial zone, it allows retail ser- uh, stores, service businesses, service businesses with, under best management practices such as barber shops, beauty parlors, if they're served by public store, they're permitted as a right. Special permit would allow those if they're not served by, uh, by public store. Under the BT one zone, uh, the stores and retail stores for personal and business services are permitted and by, by right and special permit use, they allow vocational schools for profit. Under the BT two zone, um, permitted as a right would be, um, stores and shops and stores and shops for conduct of personal service and business services such as beauty parlors and spa, which is interesting. And also the C, the CCD one and two zones also permit retail and personal business services as well as studios of dance as a right. Personal services, how do you define personal services? Well, the regs are all, all over the place on personal services. We can, we can go over a few of them now, but some of them are. So for instance, on a PSA, they just talk about the conduct of personal services. Under, uh, PSB, the conduct of personal services. It gets more elaborate on some of them, where they talk about, uh, for instance, on G C, the G C zone, service, service businesses such as painters, lingerie, custom dressmakers, jewelry repair, shoe repair, travel agents, appliance repair, photographers, duplication services, uh, service businesses, and so also in the G C zone, governed by best management practices as defined by the department, providing with protections such as barber shops, beauty parlors, furniture, try cleaning stores, um, which are served by a public store. And then, one final distinction is under the BT one and BT two zones, they also give you that laundry list of different types of personal business services. But when you talk about beauty salon, they also have a slash spa. So that's the first time that spa is going into play, specifically enumerated. And I, I, and I'll get, I'll get to why I'm going to that in a second. And looking to the, um, personal ser- during my personal services, during my conversations with staff about personal services and, you know, amending this, my conversations with staff was that this phrase is broadly interpreted unless specifically enumerated elsewhere. Well, it is specifically enumerated elsewhere, as I stated. Some of them talk, have a laundry list of what constitutes personal services and some don't. The earlier, uh, references that I made from the, uh, plant shopping A and plant shopping B just kind of say personal services whereas the later ones that I talked about actually provided you with that laundry list of different services. And I state that now because, um, the actual proposal that I have, my, my, uh, client, the, uh, the genesis of this was that, uh, he wanted to, he, uh, a tenant approached him and wanted to put in, um, a spa, a, a day spa, uh, at that location. And staff said it wasn't permitted, these personal services are not, are not identified as appropriate in that zone, so allowed in that zone. I think if you look at that building, uh, it, it calls out a, a day spa. I mean, where people could go and, uh, you know, I've never been to a day spa, where you take your hands down or your feet down whatever you get done at a day spa, there are a variety of different things. But, uh, so I, I would, I would think that the proposal that I, that I submitted really adopted the, the earlier zones that I talked about, the plant shopping A and plant shopping B zones. But I would, I would, um, I would think it would be probably more appropriate that we actually do a, do a laundry list. Because what I don't want to do is if this commission sees fit to allow personal services in this zone, because a day spa or a beauty parlor or a day spa is specifically enumerated in another zone, then it, it could be interpreted that it's not permitted in this zone unless that laundry list is provided and includes a day spa or, or beauty parlor, et cetera. So that's the only reason that I, that I, that I brought that up. And you can see that, uh, on, on the zoning map, um, the, uh, personal services are provided up and down the turnpike. The plant shopping B is on the north end of the turnpike, you have the BT one zone and the BT two zone all over the turnpike. So it's not that, it's not that personal services are not identified in the regulations that's permitted along the Berlin Turnpike. In addition to the proposed text change for personal services, my client has also had inquiries for use of the property for a driving school, a repetition school. Hence the proposed text change I have in new section six C two H. Once again, this would be my special permit, and again, this use seems entirely appropriate. Since both of these types of schools are for profit, they adopted the language of the plant shopping A zone. And as indicated, the, the plant shopping A zone allows for-profit schools. There's also another reference to, uh, there's only regulations for vocational or profit schools. We are not asking for a vocational for-profit school, which would be University of Phoenix type of school, a higher education type of school. We're looking more for like a driving school or for, uh, or for a petition school. And a petition school would be different than a beauty parlor. A beauty parlor would be for a personal service, whereas a petition school would be a, uh, training, more of a, a vocational training. And that's the purpose of the two different, of the, of the two different proposals. Once again, because of the specifically enumerated, um, issue, perhaps the proposal should specifically reference driving schools and petition schools or similar schools. And the reason I say that is because the proposal that's written, um, which much, which again is adopted from the plant shopping A and plant shopping B zone states that schools operating for profit, semi-colon, study, studios of dance, photography, graphic design, painting, similar endeavors. So I would not want to run into that issue of interpretation again where it's simple and just specifically enumerated in the laundry list in various sections. So I would suggest that perhaps schools operating for a profit such as schools, uh, studios of dance, photography, graphic design, driving schools, petition schools, or similar endeavors. I would, I would maybe strike out artistic, because I'm not sure, a driving school. While a petition school might follow to an artistic measure, I don't think a driving school follows to that. So that's why I would, I would like to tweak my proposal. If the commission sees fit to even go in this direction and amend the regulations to allow for these types of activities in the SPDB zone. That's all I have for, for tonight. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. When you talk about similar artistic endeavors, um, you're talking about schools, are you perhaps? Is that open to like a tattoo school or a tattoo parlor or to open to a body piercing school or the art of body piercing school of design or? I mean, it just, it seems that it, it can, it can, um, it can lead down that kind of a path as opposed to, you know, a hairdressing school or, you know, learning to drive your car or something. So, um, I, I mean, I, I would even just strike for similar artistic endeavors.
I, I agree. What I would say, or, or, or similar tools. Right now, this is the language in, in, in the plant shopping A and, and plant shopping B zoning regulations. So, you know, if somebody were to come in now in the plant shopping A or plant shopping B zone, could they put a tattoo parlor in it? Or a school, maybe you should just throw schools to.
I guess you have to learn in someplace, right?
Yes, I'll show the practice in a bit, actually, right, in the shop that buys, I really don't know. But, uh, you know, I, I, I'm not opposed to tightening up this language and going more to a laundry list and getting away from or similar. But I'm, I'm just, I want to make sure that from my client's standpoint, that petition schools and driving schools are included in the language. So that, where, you know, staff would, um, whatever the application can end for the services, it's only a bias. So I typically, that would be part of the quote.
Uh, Maureen, I saw that you were.
So I may have a little bit of weight on that. Um, it has been the determination of this commission in the past that so, the certain, um, specific uses are unique and don't fall under the general personal service or artistic uses that you've had. Um, I believe there was a, I'm guessing that it was twenty sixteen, I believe there was another determination made around twenty ten just after that, that specifically called out tattoo parlors and piercing as individual different use not falling into the category of, um, the general regulations and therefore prohibited in certain zones. And you've seen those specific uses come to you a couple of times for a tat- tattoo in particular and more recently the, um, beauty, um, what do they call it?
Yes, sir.
The, the. The blade, microblading and stuff that came specifically to you for, um, uh, defined use. So that's been an interpretation that, you know, has been passed down through. Cleaning up the language is always encouraged, it saves us several battles with people at the counter, but it's also not necessarily necessary because of the interpretation that the commission had to stay.
Right, thank you. Um, is there anyone, commission, that has any questions for the applicant at this? And because we're, oh, Mr. Edg, and then I'll go to the on-screen folks and see if you guys have anything that you'd like to add.
Commissioner, two forty tenth Road, um, I think we got a little bit in the weeds on this one. I, I think we've gone a little deeper than we needed to. I think the artistic part also was the dancing similar and the fact that we're not sure what's coming down the line. I think this commission and the planning department has been very direct on tattoo and the like. I think if somebody did try to sneak underneath this, it would be charged quite quickly. I myself am commissioner and support of the text amendment. Uh, as you know, this zone basically oversees with the Golden Triangle, as everybody knows, was looking to be a blue max square type development, which sadly not going to happen in this economy. I believe that there are great options here in the existing buildings as well as long-term. I think this would be a great avenue to help bring in new businesses within the existing properties. It also helps in the area of the personal service, studio, schools and the like. If you look that we added, um, schools down and MC Barber is now running a very successful school. So I think that the school part of it is important because that building is, it's not a big building with their spaces in it that somebody could definitely use, I think it's a good additions that Attorney Sullivan has brought in.
Great, thank you. And is there anyone online or zooming with us that wishes to comment or address the commission regarding his application in a for against? Hearing none, going back to the commission, any other questions?
So I'm, I'm just commissioner, I'm just looking at the building, I guess, prior uses of this building. I mean, there was a fitness studio in there, fitness by design, there was a radio station, you know, things I was listening to and what. You know, what uses are, so it's had mixed uses to begin with.
Yeah, there was the Castle Black model, he was here for a long time, um, which technically was a type of school they taught kids how to bottle. Some sort of.
Well, I don't think. I liked it better as a chocolate place, but anyway, that's okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, just a comment. So is the, the use that comes to mind for me, and I've never been to one of these places, but the use that comes to mind for me as maybe being appropriate, but I don't know if it would fit from what you're, uh, proposing, uh, would be one of these, uh, like art teaching studios where people drink wine and do painting or pottery or something like that. So, I mean, would that fit under the definition?
Well, I thought about that myself today, and I, I couldn't put it under school. I don't think, it, it more under school than personal service. I'm not sure.
It's a little of both.
It's a little of both, yeah, you know, you, you do learn, I don't know, I guess, great pottery or.
What kind of wines are like?
Whatever you do, I mean, yeah, if you have some wine tasting on, I would say do that as well. There's a lot of teaching about, about a lot of, I'm, I'm unsure exactly what it includes in this thing. That's why I was thinking that you, you know, perhaps a little more of a laundry list as is approached in the, um, in the other zone, not, not the P S two zone, but rather in the BT one and BT two zone. Because I think they actually identify a spa would be allowed, but I would not want this for this, a day spa. That if we didn't put in a laundry list here, that it could be interpreted that, well, it's in a, a laundry list in the BT one and BT two zones, so therefore it's excluded, specifically excluded in this zone. That's not really what the staff was saying, but I'm, I'm always, unfortunately, as I said, in the weeds trying to anticipate. And, um, you know, in, in this particular instance, uh, you know, perhaps a laundry list is, is appropriate, somewhat of a laundry list is appropriate just naming certain things.
All right, yes, Maureen?
Okay, so I just wanted to add that, um, the dance, driving, um, pottery, karate, those types of uses, what are categorized as schools or in the type of use you just described with? If they have a pottery studio and they have that kind of evening class that lasts for two hours or that you have a bridal shower at or what have you, um, we would be interpreting those unless directed differently by the commission as the uses that are allowed, um, under the, um, studios. And they would be all included in those studio uses. Um, they, we have them throughout town in the CCD two zone. We have driving schools as well as, um, karate and dance, et cetera, pottery, um, as well as on the Berlin Turnpike, in the Berlin Turnpike zone, yeah, BT two one, um, and they have been interpreted as more broadly. A concern I have of going too far in the weeds is if you list a couple of examples, that's the way I was taught to write legislation. If you list a couple of examples, you're getting the juices flowing. Once you hit a certain point, if you didn't include it, you're excluding it and it leaves, um, additional innovative changes over time, changes to, uh, to what people are looking to do in just a couple of years' time. They have new innovative ideas and it then puts them in the category of having to come in. That all being said, in this zone, these uses are special permit uses. So keep in mind that they would be, be coming to the commission for approval for the use regardless. So if there were parameters there that, um, interpreted as not fitting, if it was going to end up requiring more parking because of the intensity or something like that, that's all, those are all parts of the. because of the intensity or something like that, that's all, those are all parts of the special permit considerations as well. Because the SPBB does call for special permit uses, no, no cycling.
So we're covered by that as well, an extra guard. Okay.
And I'm sorry, my comments didn't print, so I just pulled them up on the screen. In a way, I just want to make sure I didn't have anything else. As with any tax amendment, you have to just give some thought as to whether it meets the intent of the zone and the plan of conservation and development. I did want to reiterate what Attorney Sullivan stated. There are existing, I dangled three developed parcels in this zone with the businesses that he detailed. The rest of the, the zone is substantially vacant. And so therefore any development of the zone of those, of any other property in the zone would require, again, a special permit with a site plan, improvement plan, or whatever uses go in. And the dimensional requirements of the SPBB zone are more strict than your typical BT one zone, other commercial zones. So they need more land area for their setbacks, et cetera, to accomplish that. So some of the existing small lots would not fit that zone to be further developed by using, utilizing these. And then I did also want to scroll the, now I can summarize that the. As a tax amendment gets sent to the regional agencies, we got comments back that they saw no conflict with the, the state plan of conservation and development or any conflicts with the surrounding towns, if we were to.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else for the public or for the commissioners?
I'm sure there's just picking up on what Maureen said about the POCD. I just want to use my conclusion is that Plan of Conservation Development provides for expanding a lot of uses in the SPBB zone, which targets the properties historically that have been by the Golden Triangle. POCD emphasizes flexibility over agility, so as to preclude, so not to preclude the opportunity that enables you to grow the business. The properties within the SPBB zone are identified in the POCD as a targeted economic, as targeted economic sites, the Ted sites. You know, the POCD supports embracing new opportunities, which in the discretion of the planning, joint and commission accommodates economic growth. Just picking up on what Maureen said, I think the POCD does support some of that.
Thank you. Anything else that I'll make a motion, I'll listen to it. You're still in public hearing, so. Make a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Torsey. Do we have a second?
I have a question.
No one seems to have a question. I know, a second by Mr. Sigma. Okay. So all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Oh, my God. Thank you, Andrew. No, it was your whole time. All right, do we need to do a roll call on that?
No, not on closing.
All right, and next up, we have a special permit with site plan application of James P. Cassidy, Policy Pearson and Cassidy representing Task of Ford, Connecticut for construction of a thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five square foot building to be used as a truck repair facility with parking, automobile display and related site improvements at two fifty Webster Square Road and zero Worthington Ridge, map ten dash four, block eighty-three C, lot six A in the PSA zone and seventy-three Woodland Road in the BT one zone per VCR, six A, three C and, we have twelve and thirteen. So here we go. And I believe.
Madam Chair, I will stop stepping down from this item.
Okay.
Because of the proceeding, the applicant thinks it may be a conflict. I do not, but because of the applicant's comments, I will sit down.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sigma. Do we have Mr. Zero Bozo with us?
Mr. Cassidy, what was that?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Zero Bozo, okay. I would ask, I would ask you to please be seated for this item for Mr. Sigma, who has now recused himself.
You got it.
All right, thank you. All right, so who do we have? A representing, I guess, Task of Ford. Is it online? Okay, there you are. Okay, thank you.
So for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer and principal with the firm of Howells, the Pearson and Cassidy. I'm here tonight representing Task of Ford, who owns, actually, it's actually three pieces of property located at two fifty Webster Square Road. There is also an additional piece of property located that is basically a back property located at zero Worthington Ridge. And then another piece at seventy-three Woodland Road. First question I have is, is it possible to share my screen or is that?
Yes. Yes, we're working on that right now. Thank you. Bear with us.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're here before this evening, first of all, we've submitted two applications. Number one, we've submitted a site plan application for the development of all three of these parcels. The proposal is for the development of a new truck repair facility for Task of Ford. This is to replace their existing truck repair facilities that was within the existing dealership right now and to approve their, their operations. So you have a site plan application. We also have a special permit application that's filed. That's what the public hearing is for this evening. The special permit is from section B one or six A three C for automobile, automobile dealership, including accessory automotive services and repairs. And section six G three D for motor vehicle repairs. We did send out notifications, a letter notifying all of the neighbors that this public hearing was going to occur this evening. There's a copy of the letter that was sent out to everybody. And we also submitted all the return receipts or all the certified mailings that were filed also. As I mentioned, again, this, this application today is for Task of Ford. The proposal is for the development of a new building, a one-starred building with a footprint of thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five square feet that will be utilized as a truck repair facility. As part of the package that we submitted to you, there was an existing condition survey submitted. It's a little bit tough, I know, to see on the screen the actual existing conditions. So I'm going to flip over to this screen, a little bit easier to see, I think, as a Google Earth photo. So as I mentioned, the parcel actually consists of three pieces. The lighter gray rectangle in this area is the existing dealership. North on this page is up, so to the west or to the left is Webster Square Road. To the north or top is Woodland Road. Off to the right or to the east here is existing residents along Worthington Ridge. To the south or to the bottom is the movie theater presently owned by Store Master Funding. This is the old movie theater off to the south. The primary dealership right now is on this piece with the address of two fifty Washington Square Road. As I mentioned, there is a piece of property back here that is part of this application. That address is actually zero Worthington Ridge Road. Technically, it's a land-like piece of property. It will be combined with the front piece as part of this application. In addition to, there's the third piece, this piece in here along Woodland is, the address is seventy-three Woodland Road. On this photo, you will see an existing building. That building has actually been removed some time back. If you were to go out there today, all that exists is the remains of the, the floor slab for that building. It's presently used for vehicle displays. The piece on seventy-three Woodland is in the BT one zone. The purple line on the plan represents the zone line between the BT one. And then the back portion here to the south is zone PSA two. So plan development, I'm sorry, PSA, PS dash A, so plan development zone. Off to the east is owned R fifteen residential, so these are residential homes. We are bounded on this northeasterly corner by the Car Star Automotive Repair Facility. Once again, on the south by the movie theater and north by Woodland, and then on the west by Webster Square Road. As you can see, there is a significant amount of parking spaces on the property today in total. There's actually four hundred and ninety-eight spaces, majority of which is used for display of vehicles along the front of the building and off to this north corner. The existing building has a footprint of about thirty-six thousand square feet. The back area is presently used for storage of vehicles that need to be repaired or maintained. The repair shop facility consists of about the back two-thirds of the building. In addition to where my cursor is right now, excuse me, let me see if I can get a better cursor up here. It's a little better. This area is their express loop, so there is some repair facility up in the front corner here. If you take a look at the grades on the site, you find overall the site is pretty flat. The highest point is along Worthing, the rear property line of Worthington Ridge, where the elevation is about sixty-eight. It drops off pretty steeply as it comes down to this parking lot. And the low spot is in the center of this parking lot, actually, at about elevation forty-eight. The teal areas are wetlands that are on the property. There was a wetlands area delineated along this northeasterly corner of the site. In addition to, there's the remains of a small drainage whale that is an isolated piece of wetlands located to the center of the site. Majority of the drainage presently drains from these parking areas to this drainage whale. It's carried out through a culvert and eventually ties into the drainage system in Webster Square Road. I'll note that as part of this application, we did need to go to the wellness commission to receive a permit to fill in this small portion of wetlands. We were granted that permit on March second of this past year, so just a few months ago. The proposal we have before you this evening is to develop this site, as I mentioned, with the brand-new state-of-the-art truck repair facility. As if anyone's been by Task of Ford, you find that they sell a lot of, we'll say, commercial-type vehicles for small contractors. Basically, small dump trucks and utility-type trucks. They also sell utility vans and also some small buses. So what the idea is, is if they act, Task of Ford actually has several facilities, one in particular up in Cranston, Rhode Island. They have a very similar type building up in Cranston. So what the idea is, is to build this new rectangle, rectangle is shown towards the center of the page. Once again, I'm just going to flip over a page because I think it's a lot easier to follow when you look at it on Google Earth photo. So the brown rectangle that you see here will be the new truck repair facility. It has a total footprint area of thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet. Access to the building would technically, for vehicles for service, would be through the rear. A little while, I'll be flipping over to a building plan so you can understand how the interior of this works. But the idea is that all the service would occur within the building. Whereas a typical truck repair facility or other type of repair facility, it has majority of the service stores on the exterior of the building. Vehicles would pull in like they do today, and then they back out when they're done. What this facility will happen is the majority of the vehicles that will be serviced would pull in this sub land. There's going to be a drive-out corridor right down the center. There's, you're going to see that there's bays on either side of that corridor where all the work is done. And then when they're done, they pull out through the north end of the building, out through the parking lot and continue on their way. We tried to situate this building to be sensitive to the residents off to the east. In this zone, when we bought a residence, we were required to have a minimum of a seventy-five-foot buffer from that residence. If you were to take a look at the existing parking lot location on the prior Google Earth photo, you'd find that parking lot is basically up against that fifty-foot line. This is the fifty-foot line. We are actually going to be pulling the, the building back from that slightly. Zoom up here. We actually have about seventy-five feet from the back corners of this building. When I show you the architectural elevations of this building, what you'll notice is that there are no doors on the back of it. There are going to be a couple of windows up high just to allow some natural light into the building. Again, the main access doors will be on the south and on the north. There are four doors on this west side, so that these doors will face towards the, say, the parking lot core between the existing service area and this new building. These four doors are for larger vehicles such as buses that cannot pull in this way and get up on a lift. They need a larger lift to sit on. So those four doors are specifically for larger vehicles that need to go into this facility. In addition to. Up at this front corner, this northwest silly corner, this would be the customer reception area, an office area. So associated with that, we're proposing to have a parking area to the north of it and then off on the west side here. These spaces will be specifically, specifically designed just for the customers that are coming in. As part of this application, the other thing that we're going to be doing is we're going to be cleaning up this entire front area. We are building a new parking lot. This will be an area for display of vehicles. When you take a look at these spaces, typically your requirement is the space would be nine feet by eighteen. These spaces are actually ranged from about ten, ten feet wide to about twenty-five to thirty feet deep to appropriately accommodate a construction-type vehicle or, again, a small dump truck or bus that would be for sale. So this whole front area would become display vehicles. There is going to be a new driveway curb cut back out to Woodland. There is an existing curb cut from the old factory that was here, and this is approximately the location. This curb cut would be an exit only, so the driveway on the west side, or sorry, on the east side is drive, parking lot, would be one-way out only. The main access driveway off of Woodland would be in this location here. It is slightly to the west of the existing curb cut from the former factory that was on this property. This would be a full access driveway. This would bring around the customers in to their parking lot or also into the service area where they need to park their vehicles. We did incorporate a bunch of new islands in, in this parking lot, so we can, you know, kind of trace it up and remove the overall massive impervious coverage. We did create an island to basically separate the customer parking area from the display area also. You will also notice on the plan, there is a larger green area to the center. This is an additional feature that Taska asked us to look at. Basically, I'm going to flip over our plan here, sorry. So generally, what this is, it's, it's a built-up mound of earth that's going to be maintained as a lawn. It's about twelve feet high. It's an area that they would like to be able to display a few vehicles along the top of it. There'll be a, a large landscape island. We're talking about putting a sign built onto a stone wall to the side of it. The one thing that I will mention, I'm sure it's going to come up in a comment later, is there's issues with, with signs on this property. I'm not asking the commission to take a look at signs tonight. I would ask to come back in future time when we can straighten out the situation with the signs. We're trying to inventory everything Taska presently has on their existing facility, come up with a comprehensive sign plan and propose any additional new signs as part of a separate application. All we're asking the commission to look at is the new building and the, the site plan itself. Going back to the site plan, as I mentioned previously, presently on the site, you have four hundred and ninety-eight spaces. With this proposal, all we're really doing is gaining about thirty-five spaces. Will be at a total of about five hundred and thirty-three spaces, the majority of which are for the purpose of displaying of new and used vehicles. Per your resounding regulations, section nine C, under business-type uses, automotive sale establishment, the requirement for parking is, is defined as, as determined by the commission. So it's no specific requirement. Again, Taska is trying to improve their operations. So they feel by this new truck repair facility that the parking that's proposed would be more than adequate. Um, so they feel by this new truck repair facility uh that the parking that's proposed uh would be more than adequate at this point. Utilities. The majority of sites presently paved. Um, one thing I will note, uh, when you take a look at the grading and the way the drainage works, you'll notice uh this parking here in the center, a little bit of history, the factory that was there uh had some environmental issues. Um, you'll see that there's a concrete slab remaining out there. Uh, that concrete slab remains because of those environmental issues. So what we are proposing to do is with the construction of this parking lot is that slab would actually remain in place. Uh, we've designed it in a manner and graded it in a manner where we have a crest uh midway through the parking lot. Uh, from that crest, uh, the drainage sheet flow off in each direction uh to a low point just beyond where the pad is. At that point, we have a series of catch bases to collect the water. That's waters collected to where the drainage whale used to be. Uh, and having that drainage whale, which was promoting some groundwater recharge, uh, we're proposing to put a small underground infiltration system. Uh, that infiltration system would discharge through an outlet control structure, continue on to the existing culvert uh and continue to the existing drainage system out in Webster Square Road. Uh, we did prepare an extensive drainage port as part of this project. Uh, and we find with uh these proposed conditions and the additional payment that's proposed out here post development, uh, there should be no increase in flow uh as part of the overall development of this facility. Uh, otherwise, or additional to, I should say, for utilities, um, there is water and sewer out in woodland. Uh, we are proposing to put a, actually a low pressure force vein just outside the building because the grades are so flat. Uh, the gravity feed from the building to that that low pressure uh pump chamber and then through a low pressure pipe and then back into the gravity sewer. Uh, there'd be water service and fire protection brought in off the main and woodland in the back into the building. All the other utilities uh would be brought in underground uh to the site, so there'd be no overhead wires as part of the site. Excuse me. Uh, I'll note, um, as part of our wetlands approval, uh, one of the things we were required to do, and I include this plan just as an explanation, uh, is if you take a look along this uh eastly side of the drive aisle, uh, there's a bunch of invasive species in this area that had joined that wetlands. Um, we're gonna go in, we're gonna leave the more mature growth, the the good trees, uh, the larger deciduous trees, but all the invases underneath, we're going to clean them out, uh, clean up the area uh to let the good trees thrive and get rid of the bad vegetation that's in there. The building itself, um, this is the floor plan of the building. Um, so the the right, I'm sorry, the left side of the building here where my uh spotlight is, uh, this would be the side that we facing towards Woodland. The right is the back, the south side that faces towards the movie theater. Uh, this side here, the bottom, is the side that's going to face towards the existing car dealership. And then the upper portion is the portion that faces to the residence off to the east. As I mentioned, what will happen uh is that you'll enter a garage door here uh through the south. You'll be able to drive down this corridor and that corridor, you'll be able to pull on to a lift, so all the work is done internally uh in a state of art repair facility. Uh, some of the advantages are uh compared to existing facilities. Uh, there's a state of the art air purification system. Um, so like uh vehicles running exhaust uh is handled by that system rather than having the old type where you have a tube that goes out the door uh through the garage door and out to the outside. All that's handled internally. So we're looking at a total of, I believe, it's fifteen bays in total uh for your typical truck repair facility. Uh, as I mentioned, on the dealership side or on the west side of the building, uh, we have these longer bays. Uh, once again, so you can get such a vehicle in as a school bus uh that wouldn't fit on the other lifts. So these will be your larger vehicle bays. There's also a couple of bays you'll see in the front section here uh or the south section. Uh, these are what we call tear down bays, uh, a vehicle that needs a major repair such as uh engine removal or replace. Uh, nowadays, uh, when they're doing that type of repair, it's actually easier to take the whole cap off, the cab off the truck uh to do the work. Um, so the to tear downs of that sort can happen in that area and not tie up a bay while that occurs. Uh, and then off to this corner here, you'll see this standalone bay. Uh, this is a spray and bed liner uh bay. Um, so there's actually a storage area to the uh south side of it. Uh, that's where the spray and bed liner material is stored. Uh, and then the actual spraying happens in a booth in this area. The bottom corner in here uh is the actual office and customer reception area. Uh, that's where the parking is just outside of it. Uh, the building itself uh is a one story of flat roof structure. Uh, the overall height is going to be about twenty feet. Um, you looking at fourteen foot high garage stores, this is the side once again that's facing towards the existing auto dealership. Uh, the left side is going to be the main entrance um for the customers. Uh, this would be the side that's facing towards uh Woodland Road. Uh, the material is going to be a dark gray split face concrete block. Um, there's a band of a white uh panel of a flush panel above that as an accent. And then the upper portion is a lighter gray uh vertical metal siding. Uh, once again, we're showing some conceptual signage here. Uh, I know signage is a bit of an issue here and rather than bogging down the commission, trying to straighten all of it out, I'd really like to handle it as a separate application that we'd be coming back with. Again, I gotta do a lot of inventorying of what's out there for signs today. Um, we have also prepared a pretty extensive erosion sediment control plan as part of this application. Uh, seeing the majority of the site is already paved. Um, not a lot of area that's going to be disturbed, disturbed, other than the regrading and creation of this front parking lot. Uh, and then the installation of the building, which the majority of it's presently within a paved parking lot. Um, so the majority of erosion sediment control is going to be controlling uh sediment to the existing drainage system that will consist of putting hay bales around all the catch basins uh and then also silt sacks in them during the construction process. Uh, we will have a topsoil stockpile area and that's basically gonna be the area where we're gonna build that mound uh that we previously talked about. Excuse me. Um, as part of our wetlands approval, uh, we actually also agreed um to know the catch basins uh to install something into the catch patients that's called an ab tech filter. Uh, this is a unit that captures the runoff off the parking lots. Uh, it's a filter system that actually helps remove pollutants uh such as oils and greases um that are would typically drip off a vehicle. Back here. So again, uh, what we've done is we've tried to be very conscious to the neighbors. Uh, whereas there's vehicles sitting out in the open right now, whereas the repair operation, if they can see through the woods, uh, you would be able to see the existing doors. We've turned the whole thing around, so all they have is the the blank wall um that would face them. The fifty foot buffer uh remains in play. Um, there's a mature area of uh deciduous trees in this area, all that would remain. Uh, we're actually pulling it back an additional twenty five feet beyond that fifty foot buffer. Uh, so we tried to be very conscious to the residents on this side uh and that it gets all the repair operations pushed away from them or pointed in another direction away from them. Excuse me. Um, as I mentioned previously, this is a small wetlands that's being filled as part of this project. Uh, again, we're really not increasing the overall number of parking spaces. Uh, if you take a look at the property and the zoning requirements, uh, we broke the the property down into two separate zoning tables. And let me explain what's going on here. Uh, the upper one uh is for two fifty Webster Square Road. Uh, this piece will actually include or does include the area of zero Worthington Bridge. Uh, that as part of this application all combines into one, uh, so that area overall is eight point two six acres. Uh, the front yard setback requirement uh technically needs to be uh seventy five feet. Um, I gotta double check the number. I think I may have that number wrong, I'm sorry. Um, the side yard setback needs to be twenty, but we need to be fifty against the residential district. Uh, we're gonna be at seventy five uh to the residential district. Um, the existing building at one point is forty two feet. Uh, rear yard uh setback, that's the side that would butt up against um the movie theater. Um, that requirement is to be thirty but fifty at a residential. Uh, we're actually gonna be about two hundred and seventy two feet away. Uh, building height, it's only one stories, it's technically only about twenty feet, so we're under the thirty five foot uh height requirement. Um, setbacks, we need to be minimum of ten feet. Uh, the only area that we're gonna be ten feet uh is where our parking lot is along the subway property line, that's an existing condition. Building coverage, uh, you'd allow it to be twenty five, uh, presently at nine point nine, uh, we're gonna be eighteen point nine for the new building. Total impervious coverage, we're we're allowed to be seventy five. Uh, right now, there's sixty eight point nine, we'll be at seventy four point six. Uh, and then the lot width and all that information will remain the same. Um, what we've done is we created a separate table. Uh, this table is for seventy three Woodland. Um, this is where the parking facility is, the portion of the safer parking. We would like to keep that as a separate piece of property. Um, we understand you'd be looking at this as one big comprehensive development. Uh, the parking area works with the truck repair facility and the auto dealership. Uh, the reason for keeping this as a separate piece of property is once again because there's environmental issues on it. There's an environmental lane use restriction on that property because of the former factory. Uh, that concrete slab needs to remain in place, um, but it would always be owned uh by Tasker Ford. Uh, just technically needs to be on their separate name, cannot be combined uh with this piece of property. Uh, the other things to consider as part of this application, uh, back a couple pages. Uh, as we went through your special permit criteria under section twelve D point one of the zoning regulations. Uh, and there's several items you need to consider as part of the special permit criteria. Um, A is consistency with the town plan and conservation and development. The use of this subject property as a motor vehicle repair facility is consistent with the town's lean use plan as it is allowed a new subject to receive of a special permit. B, appropriate utilities and improvements. The applicant has already been reviewed by impermitted by the Town of Berlin Wetlands uh Commission. Uh, the site is already disturbed. Uh, the detailed erosion control plan uh has been included. The property is already serviced by public water and public sewer and all the necessary materials are available, including electric cable and telephone, water and sewer, as we previously talked about. Preservation of improvements and features, uh, there are no important features to preserve on the subject parcel uh as it is already disturbed and consists of an automotive repair, it's a repair dealership. And I'm sorry, dealership and the majority of the site is already paved. D, the appropriate location and size. The proposed development meets all the bulk requirements required with the respective zones. Um, the display area of the truck repair facility, necessary uses and a part of the overall existing automotive dealership use and therefore is in harmony with the surrounding area. Uh, appropriate loading and parking. Uh, the additional parking is mainly uh for the display of commercial vehicles. Uh, the development will be in adequately screened so that it will not impact the residential uses that abut through the fifty abutting through the fifty foot setback with the existing vegetation. Uh, adequate street and highways, the highway around this development uh are sufficient to accommodate uh the use and no significant additional traffic is anticipated as part of the overall change uh of the site. Again, uh, with respect to traffic, I'll also note that all we're doing is um basically replacing a outdated and antiquated uh repair facility. Uh, they're very, they're definitely very busy with what they do. Uh, what happens today is you'll find a lot of vehicles are in and out of the repair shop uh so they can accommodate for everybody. This brings everything inside in a neat or orderly manner. Suitable location size, uh, there's already an existing automotive dealership at this site. So adding the additional display uh and the antiquated truck repair facility are in harmony with the overall use and patterns of development of this area. The appropriate design, um, the neighborhood surrounding this area is already heavily developed. Uh, because of the existing use and expansion, it should not impact the character of the neighborhood. The architectural elevations are included in the plan. And again, we tried to situate any of the operations as part of this development away from the residents that are to the east. Appropriate landscaping and screening, uh, as I mentioned on the east side. Uh, it is an existing deciduous uh buffer, uh, about fifty feet in width. Uh, we've increased it by twenty five to twenty five feet would be a lawn area at the base of the slope uh to make it possible to may maintain around the perimeter of this building. Uh, emergency preparedness, uh, the property is located in established roadway uh and the property is easily accessible by emergency vehicles. Uh, there are two accesses proposed off of uh Woodland Road. Uh, one is through an existing curb cut. Uh, the other one in the center would be through a new curb cut that provides two way access uh to this facility, easy access around the entire building. Uh, in addition to, uh, because we'll maintain a lawn area along the back, uh, there's access along the back of it. Uh, although it's not set up for emergency vehicle access, uh, it does allow other other people to get around it if there is in case of emergency. But there are no repair, there are no doors along the backside of the building. There's only windows for natural light. Long term viability, uh, the applicant Tasker Ford Connecticut is a well-known business with an established operation in the present location. Uh, they maintain and propose development in the same manner uh that they maintain the current one. Uh, I'll also note, uh, they do have two other uh facilities, uh, one up in Cranston, Rhode Island. Uh, the one in Cranston, Rhode Island is probably a good, at least three, if not four times the size of this facility. Uh, Tasker Ford has been around, if I'm correct, about fifty years, um, so they are very established automobile dealership. Um, that I believe they're they're here to stay in in Berlin. Uh, and then uh L, the final item is purpose of the regulation. Uh, the proposed uses in accordance with the purpose of the zoning regulations as permissible use in the zone, subject to a special permit law, which we'll be here for you this evening. Um, so with that, um, I'm going to conclude my presentation, uh, and I'll hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Hey terrific. Um, this is a public hearing, so um I'll go right to the public person. Is there anyone who has any questions? Uh, yes, sir, or is making statements, try to.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Luis. My first question would be, would you concede that having a truck repair facility built within a few hundred yards of your residence would be detrimental to your quality of life? This is, this is for the presenter.
That's for the uh, Mr. Cassidy.
Would you concede that?
No, uh, I would say that if you has an existing facility there, the area this building is going is an open parking lot. Uh, it's presently used for storage of vehicles uh that are out there running, can be idling. Uh, we're taking all that existing open parking lot and we're putting it into an enclosed facility uh to reduce the noise uh and view of those vehicles. Uh, we designed in a manner uh so it it, all the operations are away from the residence. They don't point towards the residence. Um, I think it's cleaning up an existing operation that they presently have on this this property. It increases the buffer. Uh, right now, again, that parking area is at fifty feet uh from the residential zone, the building will be at seventy five feet. And again, all the operations are within it. The wall that abuts the residence um is a way. Um, again, it is the, let's call it the quiet wall. Uh, there's, there's nothing, no openings, doors uh in that wall. Um, the facility is designed as a state of the art facility, meaning that your air purification systems uh will take in the exhaust that's in the building uh and 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 cleanse it before it's allowed to discharge.
It was basically, I guess, a whole question.
Okay, no.
All right. Well, I, I'm sorry, just please direct your comments. I know you have difficulty hearing, please, uh, the applicant um or the presenter.
Yeah, I I can't see him. Oh, I heard him. Yeah, I I asked him a question and he's been sitting here a long time.
Uh, I I think he's trying to answer a question. He's trying to, at least my perception is, he's trying to assure you that they're trying to do everything they can to not impact.
Hear what he's saying.
Oh, okay.
And.
Perhaps I can.
It was a whole lot of words, you know. I just, I just wanna say a few things. I've lived next to Tasker Ford for twenty years now. And it's unpleasant. They're not good neighbors. I can smell when they're spray painting. They use the key fobs to find the cards, so all I hear is horns honking all day long. Uh, they have a swap box to find people who are up in a parking lot. I gotta listen to that all day long. Uh, they've got the brightest lights in the universe, so nobody steals their precious cars, so I woke up, I can't see the sky at night. Um, and the funny thing is, Tasker Ford's And the funny thing is, Tasker Ford's about twice as far from my house as this place is gonna be. So I guess I just want to go on record as saying, there are gonna be people who are gonna be negatively affected by this building. You can concede that or not concede that. You can have your twenty-five yard buffer, seventy-five yard buffer. But it's gonna stink unless efforts are made to make sure that when they're spray painting, it's filtered properly, so I don't have to smell it. You can knock off with the key fobs to find your cars. You can knock off with the swap box. You know, telling someone, someone to report to the office or whatever, because there are people that live around there. And the last thing I want is another smelly, stinky, ugly building next to my property, making it worthless and making my life miserable. But I guess I'm gonna have to live with it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, before you leave, I just want you to know that this commission is, and the applicant is taking every step possible so that it's not gonna impact your life. During his presentation, I know there was a lot of information flowing, but he did, he did suggest that this building is going to prevent all the, this building, all your work is gonna be done in the building. It's gonna be air purification systems running. It's gonna be a state-of-the-art building, so you're not gonna have to deal with exhaust. You're not gonna have to deal with the noise. Because it's gonna take the place of that parking lot where you have all those people beeping around. So the trucks are gonna enter on one side and they're going to exit once repaired through to the other side of the building. So you're not gonna have trucks backing in and out of that building. They're actually just gonna pull on through. So I think the attempt that the applicant is trying to provide with his presentation is to show how this is actually going to be hopefully better for you folks up there and it'll be less disruptive to your life. Now, as far as the swap box, as far as the lighting, signage, and stuff like that, we're gonna have to get around to that. Because that stuff that, that does impact you and it shouldn't.
The worst of all is, is the smell when they spray paint.
Well, the whole thing is that that's all gonna be done inside and it's gonna be purified before it comes out.
So I'm sure it's supposed to be done inside now, it, it tasks before, but apparently that doesn't stop them somehow.
But that, but that may, but that might be a system that's not currently in that building, whereas with the new technology that comes up and the new systems that are built.
One can only hope.
I, well, this is what we have to go after. This is what we have to chase down.
It, it doesn't alter in at least the fact that I'd rather not have the building there and I just wanted to make that point.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then, then I understand you.
Okay.
All right.
And I understand you.
Yeah.
And I understand the gentleman.
Yeah. All right.
Doesn't mean I have to like it.
Well, we're gonna do the best we can, okay?
Better.
All right.
Thank you.
No, thank you, sir, for your comments. I really do appreciate it and this commission does as well. And for anyone else from the public who wishes to address this commission regarding this application, either for or against. I see Mr. Ag is moving to the podium, so yes.
Present to forty Kensington Road. Yes, I'm just actually saying I've actually went to a facility in Cranston that they run in. And I'm excited because I know this is gonna give us an opportunity. That's a gentleman in his property, but I know it'll help them with what's already a very large truck sales and service, but I know right now this will give us new opportunities, particularly with our local businesses. If you look around, you'll see a lot of our contractors are driving Tasker Ford trucks. So I think it would be nice to have it. It would be a nice taxable asset and I hope that Mr. Cassidy and the team can hopefully work to minimize any effect on the residents.
Yes.
We've been working with them for a while and we had hoped to do in the existing building, but for various reasons, we couldn't. I think if we put together properly, I think it can work well and I know that they've been especially good when we have needed them to bring things from a community perspective. So I know that they are, even though they're not a Berlin family, they are a Berlin family.
And you know, I think that the technology is coming around such that swap boxes are gonna be a thing of the past. There must be other ways that they can communicate with people, whether it's text messaging or whatever. So I, I would hope that that would also be looked at. I see Mr. Mr. Legnani's on the line, but I'm not sure if he wants to comment on this. I know he's one of the commissioners. Did you have any comments, Mr. Legnani?
No comments, manager. No comments.
Then I'm gonna go back to our commissioners here, see if anyone has any input questions for our applicant.
Commissioner Rogan, seeing as, as you mentioned with one of our earlier applications, seeing as the theft of Cadillac murders is becoming a bigger issue, are you gonna have any security fencing around the perimeter of the property or anything like that to?
No, there will, there'll be no, no fencing around the property. I've considered security cameras around the property. But there's, there's no fencing associated with it.
Okay, terrific. Anyone else? At this point, anywhere else with questions or concerns?
I guess I just have. I have a question and a couple of comments. First of all, since this is a special permit, I think that elimination of the P A system in favor of something that is less intrusive on neighboring properties would be a condition of this approval. The other condition that I would propose for approval would be to discontinue the practice of displaying vehicles for sale on the grassy strip between Woodlong and the parking lot. As well as the grassy strip areas along Webster Square Road. They have plenty of display space without needing to have additional vehicles in those grassy spaces, which block vision for people trying to come and go from the parking lots. And I think it's just kind of overdoing it. And then with respect to the lighting. A gentleman that was just here brings up a good point that the lighting that's available to businesses these days can offer lots of light without trespassing out onto other properties. And so that should be a requirement for this application. Comment that I have is that I'm not in love at all with the green mound in the middle of the property. When you first were pointing that out, I thought you were gonna say that that was an area reserved for employee lunches or, you know, something nicer than what it seems like it is ultimately gonna be. And I get that they're trying to raise these vehicles up to be more visible. They're obviously gonna be highlighting those vehicles or, you know, whatever promotion sales are gonna have. I don't know, not like it.
Okay. Any other commissioners have comments at this time?
Regarding the gentleman's comment about the spray paint. Is he getting it from Tasker or is he getting it from Carstone? That building on the right-hand corner is body shop as well.
Oh, that's interesting. That could be. Well, we'll soon find out because of that fancy state-of-the-art building and
The gentleman's property though is way down the lower end. Okay, so not much is changing between him and the parking lots and stuff, so parking's still there. It's in the, it's in the, you know, if you look at that diagram, it's down in the middle where that now he's on the other end, actually.
What, what?
But it cuts, it cuts across.
I, I didn't catch the name. What was his name?
Commissioner Miller.
No, no.
His name, I think, was Will Lees.
Yeah, so his property is like way down here on this corner. Where it's cut across down the bottom.
So he's almost actually.
He's just far away from the automobile dealership.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that puts him near the movie theater more, right?
Does, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah.
He's still living here.
Well, well, you know, I mean, yeah, exactly. So he's in that, in that area where it's
It's got everything blown down, window.
Yeah.
Everything. Here it gets blown up.
I mean, he's literally gonna be at kind of one of the, towards one of the entrances to the, to the new building and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Well, hopefully the buffer, hopefully the buffer will help out with that. I don't know, maybe they can put fence or something, I don't know.
I, I can, you know, now that it's been brought to my attention, I could talk to Tasker Ford and, you know, make them aware of the situation and, you know, see what they can do to improve on that situation. I know that presently the body shop facility is in this location here. I had the unfortunate experience of having to use them this past year, so I was there many times. But I could talk to them and figure out how that, that facility's, that portion's working and what they can do if there is, you know, I've I'm, I'm, you know, a phone call helps and to let someone know that there is a situation now that I'm it's been identified with me, I can go back to them and make them aware of it and talk to them about what we can do to improve that situation also. Everything in a new facility, again, what happens is if a vehicle comes in to be repaired, it drives in. You know, again, along with the air purification system, the building is, one of the advantages is its air conditions. So even in the summer months, the doors are closed, whereas most, most repair facilities are not air conditioned. And that's why you find the doors open and you get the exhaust and the noise and everything outside. This would be state-of-the-art, so, you know, you'll have the doors closed, you don't get the, the odors and the noises outside from the new facility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any other last minute questions or now I am wearing?
I have my speech.
Okay. Okay, go for it.
Some of it's just for the record.
We're still in public here, so.
So Commissioner Jersey hit several of the items I had put on. I would ask that the standard conditions of approval, that be the direction you're headed be included, including bonding being required in the standard conditions that are generally on personal erosion controls. The the applicant should know that if Z D A applications are required to expand their dealer licensing areas, those will also be necessary. That we have some staff comments that have come back, engineering supply comments today, and I'm gonna actually read it. More concise that way. For my conversation with Jim Cassidy, I confirmed that an oil waste separator system is proposed receive flow from the intended for drink and internal for drinks. So he, and otherwise he's satisfied with the plan. On that note, I do wanna comment that the applicant has been working with staff probably since about last fall. Was one of the only in-person meetings we had as a staff with up here, because four of us could be in the room, went to head with him and the, and the owners and talked about the plans and he's been working through most of the concerns we would have had. So that's why there's limited concerns. These are kind of laundry list concerns. The building official, as he usually does, make comments about the permitting plans and complete full-scale drawings with M E Ps for permitting and a statement of special inspections will be required. In the wetlands, I'll reiterate that the permit approval was granted the March, March second, twenty twenty-one. Fire marshal, police board, police commissioners and police chief had no comment. And we did not, I did not find that we received comments back from water sewer. And I just would ask that if they have outstanding comments, they are able to, were able to work with the applicant and unless the comment would substantially change the plan, good. Then they'd have to return to you, but otherwise that those plant, those, any comments could be addressed internally. Those are usually comments with regard to permitting and licensing to get the connections. That's what we generally found with their comments and that there's any discrepancies that have to be agreed upon. I had a couple of questions for, to understand or so that everyone understands. Mr. Cassidy commented that two fifty Webster Square and zero Worthington Ridge on, on the plan, it's shown with a little connection line. Just wondering if those will be merged into one property? Or I don't believe this, the building goes across the property line, so.
They will be merged as one property.
So for the record, I wanted that. And again, he addressed signage. For the commission's knowledge, there are some existing variances on that property for signage already. But I do agree with Mr. Cassidy that they have now exceeded what is, has been permitted for signs. And so that will have to be rectified and we will be working with that prior to allowing permits for any future signs on the property. The commission should just determine that the proposed parking is sufficient or not. The develop, they would require development permits for all construction and utilities.
Okay, so we have that. So do we have, I mean, we are in the public hearing, so.
So can I respond to some of Commissioner Jersey's comments?
Yes, if you wish. Go ahead.
So I appreciate the comments. Number one, I will reach out to Tasker and, you know, basically tell them that they're gonna have to stop the display of vehicles on the front lawn. They, I know they presently have some vehicles on the Webster Square Road front lawn. And also along Woodland, there's no real defined area for display. So I think with the improvement of this parking lot, it gives them the defined area to display vehicles. So it definitely will stop on Woodland and it definitely will stop on Webster Square also, make them aware of it. With respect to the grass display, I guess the way I was looking at it is that would either have been additional surface display area, a bituminous pavement. But here was an opportunity to do something a little bit more unique. I was hoping to go online and take a, do a Google search of some other ones, but, you know, I've I find for truck guys and guys that like off-road vehicles, it's kind of a focal, a little bit more interesting to have a landscape hill and a vehicle on top of it. Similar to if you ever go to a lot of the Land Rover dealerships, they typically have a display mound. I also, I thought it would be a lot more attractive than a lot of the automobile dealerships you would see where they have the metal rack that you drive a vehicle up on to get it off the ground. This is a lot more natural. Again, it's going to not just be a grass hill, but it'd be a landscape mounds in the middle of parking lot to kind of break up the mass of pavement. So I was hoping, my opinion is, I was hoping it'd been a feature to the overall design. One of the other purposes for putting that in there is this dealership is kind of in an obscure location, not being on a main road. We were hoping by having a couple of vehicles up higher, if you're coming down the Berlin Turnpike and you come to Woodland and you look down the road, maybe it would help it kind of identify that, yeah, there is a major car dealership down here. So that was my thought behind it. Again, if, I guess it becomes a major issue, it goes away and, you know, we bring it back down the grade. Does it become a paved area instead to, to display vehicles? But I, I thought it'd be a little more interesting as a landscape feature. Lights, we are actually working with Tasker, how we would say, I would work with staff on lighting. We really didn't identify any new lights on the site. We're trying to work with a lighting vendor to upgrade and do the latest state-of-the-art, high-energy efficient L E D fixtures, also dark sky compliant with full cut-off fixtures. One of the advantages, again, with this building, is we do not light, need to light the backside that faces the residence. The building itself acts as a screen for any light we have for the display area. We're still working with the lighting vendor to figure positions. They're most likely gonna be on along the edge of Woodland shining into that parking lot. One of the issues again we have is I can't dig through that concrete slab. I gotta position lights around the perimeter of it, shine into it. I can't put anything in the middle of it because of the environment. I gotta position lights around the perimeter of it, uh, shine into it. I can't put anything in the middle of it because of the environmental land use restriction. Um, so again, uh, with that, we'll gladly continue to work with staff, um, to, you know, come up with a good, uh, uh, lighting plan, uh, for this overall development, um, that I'm sure the staff will be, um, you know, more than pleased with, uh, it's a big concern of mine. Um, and also with respect to Maureen's comments, um, you know, we're we're happy to work with staff. We've been diligently working with them. This project actually was initiated, uh, last January. Um, we got hired to start this and then COVID hit and everything went home. The dealership showed, um, slowed down. Um, but the automobile industry still seems to be booming, other than the lack of being able to get cars. Uh, they seem to be thriving. Um, so, uh, uh, late, uh, last year, they said they wanted to start this back up and get ready, get shovel ready, uh, actually be able to start the work, uh, once COVID's released or or gone, uh, which looks like we're hopefully there, knock on wood. Um, so that's sort of before you, and hopefully we can continue a lot of this project and, uh, have a nice project for the town of Berlin. Uh, but we'll continue to work with staff and address any comments and concerns they have. We are aware that we need to go to ZBA, um, for expansion of the automobile or dealership license. Um, so we are in total agreement with that. So with that, I conclude. Glad to answer any more questions you may have.
The only other comment that I would have that I thought of is that if we go with, uh, with Mr. Jorsey's thought of removing the cars from the lawn area along Woodland and I guess Webster Road, perhaps we can look at enhancing the landscaping that was along that way.
I talked, I talked to the applicant, I mentioned that to the applicant too. When you actually look along, uh, Webster Square Road, they do have street trees presently every fifty feet. Um, if I can just, my screen will let me participate here. Yeah, so if you look, uh, along Webster Square Road, you see right now they have a series of street trees about every fifty feet. Uh, I talked to them about that and told them, yeah, I thought that's one thing we're lacking on. Um, they are more than willing to continue that that theme of having the the street trees, uh, continue along Webster Square and then all the way down along Woodland, uh, road. So we'll do the entire frontage with a similar type of landscape feature. Uh, within the islands itself, um, the only thing we really can plant is low shrubs. I can't plant any larger deciduous trees. Uh, once again, because there's a concrete slab in there that needs to remain in place. Uh, the only other place I can probably add in the trees are these two islands here, uh, that would be outside that concrete, uh, these three islands that'd be outside that concrete slab area. Uh, but again, we'll be more than willing to work with staff, um, to, uh, put appropriate landscaping onto the site.
Okay, that would be great. All right, so. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, Ms. Jorsey has the motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. A favor discussion. All those in favor, closing the public hearing. Aye. All right, thanks, guys. And, um, if anyone wants, all right, so move. All right, on to the old business. All right, we're in the final stretch. Everyone thinking in there. Okay, uh, first, special permit application of BT two thousand eight. I'll I'll see for mixed use development at four oh four Berlin Turnpike. Um, this is the one Ms. Jorsey will be stepping down on, so Mr. Zarabozos, please stay seated, and we're gonna welcome Mr. Sigmar back. Um, this is, uh, all right, so this is four oh four Berlin Turnpike. Um, and, uh, all right, so where are we on this? Yes, Maureen, go.
Okay, so, um, you were all distributed, um, a draft um, motion, um, with a little bit of explanation and background. It started it, and then we have the the motion that is, um, rather lengthy, but we tried to cover all the bases. Um, I did distribute today, uh, modification to it. Um, the first portion of the modification is a couple of terms that the engineer, the town engineer asked me to add sanitary sewer pump intermittent odors. Um, and there was one or two others where they were just simply, um, terminology. He wanted to make sure was, um, distinct. Um, and then I added, oh, and the other one was and corporation counsel, but prior to this two three four, or incorporation counsel. The, um, the rest of what is added and read on that same page, um, of the newly distributed, and I think we can bring it up. I'm not positive on the screen for. All right, well, we'll, we'll try, we'll talk about it anyway, uh, but the change in the language in section four and then moving the the numbers down to into root number five is to allow, prior due to the nature and length of time with regard to getting sewer agreements and the triangular piece of property where the pump station is, um, the access agreements, um, the approvals to accept town land and accept all easement agreements while the, so that the applicant can move forward with the commercial aspect of the property, which is at phase one, is to, um, change up the wording a little bit, then would allow that to proceed with phase one, where my original wording had said they wouldn't be able to get any certificates of occupancy or transfer anything until they had um, all those other documents in place and said, we've made it so phase one can be begun. Uh, and they can move forward with getting going to the state for those applications for that, but none of the drives or connections up to phase two, three or four, or any touching of the town would be allowed. So that's the thing to word it.
Okay.
I can be relative. That's that's for the everyone in the audience or?
Sorry.
Did you bring it? He brought it up. He brought it up.
Oh, okay, that's good. That's good. Because I was gonna say, if somebody makes a motion, you can have to read this whole document to record.
I think it can probably be as posted, but, um, my suggestion and consideration when writing it was that you'd be look at each item, um, hoping that if anyone took exception to an item, that's why I numbered them. So that if you had, um, tweaks, changes, deletions, additions, you could add them by number.
Okay.
And it could give everyone a way to follow it.
All right, so does everyone, well, let's everyone just take a minute here just to look through this really quick. Anyone have any comments? This is probably the most complicated thing.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's very.
It's very thorough.
Very thorough.
Thorough.
It's like all.
Most thorough I ever seen.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve as a motion that here. Grab copy.
One that will be posted?
One will be posted.
All the stipulations.
Stipulations as as posted right now.
Okay, modify it with the red.
Yeah. Okay, so we have the motion by Mr. Sigmar. Do we have a second? I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller, for the discussion on this, commissioners. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have to do a roll call? Go ahead, use the roll of all. I want to just get them going in the right direction, so I don't want to lose.
George Miller.
Aye.
Timothy Sigmar.
Aye.
Brian Rogan.
Aye.
Peter Zarabozo.
Aye.
Andrew like Manny. Oh, not faded, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I don't.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, all right.
I haven't got seated.
No, I just.
Okay.
Um, Steve Biella Junior.
Aye.
And Chairman Biella.
Um, aye, and I hope they make us proud. Okay, so move. All right, on to further next. We have the special, we have the special.
Details.
And the staff are writing all.
Of course, the, uh,
For Tom.
Worked out very good.
Okay, we have a special permit. Uh, you cite plan action, Paul Pryor, priority LLC, the construction of fourteen thousand square foot building and eleven thousand four hundred square foot building related site improvements on map. Twenty one four block one fifteen lot twenty eight zero Berlin Turnpike, the plan industrial to the P S two zone for contractor shop per V C R. Uh, seven E three M, and Ms. Jorsey, welcome back. All right, so, um, what's the flavor of the commission? I think we had a lot of discussion on this item. Amendments, motion.
Like a motion.
Oh, I know. It's hard to get these to turn on.
Motion to approve of all staff's comments. Then blocking the the access.
Yeah, that cut off access for the government, the to us to tell them, and then we had the, um, yeah, and then we also had signage had to be under zone group. Also, the lighting would be directed away from the neighbors, not impacting them. Um, the police had no problem with that per court, so. Um, I I I think, I think the motion also that they would work in conjunction with staff and to make sure that there's a transition piece between industrial and residential, that it would really cater to, um, the residential and keeping the character of that neighborhood in play.
I'll add the chairman's, uh, chairwoman's comments, motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, Mr. Rogan has a second. Bill, oh, my goodness gracious. Okay, sorry about that. Mr. Biella. Second. So, um, for the discussion, we'll go for the vote. All right, we want to do a roll call? Okay, Maureen's gonna call rule.
George Miller.
Aye.
Diane Jorsey.
Aye.
Timothy Sigmar.
Aye.
Brian Rogan.
Aye.
Andrew like Manny.
Aye.
Steve Biella Junior.
Aye.
Chairman Biella.
I made this proud. Okay, I know you guys will do a good job.
I believe, actually, Peter was a good speaker on this, wasn't he?
Uh, no, he wasn't there at the time. It was Mr. Manny and Mr. Biella.
Oh.
That's okay. He didn't come until later, but he's with us now. That's good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Berlin. All right.
Welcome back.
Okay, all right, propose text amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations for Timothy Sullivan, the squider to add section uh, six C two commercial zones, special design districts, special permit uses. It goes on to the previously section, um, section six C two B stores or shops for the conduct of personal service businesses and new would be section six C two H schools operated for profit, studios, advanced photography, graphic design, painting, or similar artistic endeavors. Mr. Sullivan's still with us. That's great. And, um, so what are your thoughts with this item before the commission?
Commissioner Miller, I don't have an issue with it other than I think we need to get the wording right. There's a lot of questions around the word.
Aye.
Whether it needed to be a little more generalized or, uh, not quite sure how to word it.
So if you'd like to argue with that, to give staff a little bit of time to work on where in there, make sure it has the flavor of the commission.
Okay, that's what you like. If you'd like to postpone this to the the next, and is that your motion?
Do we hear a motion to postpone this or?
Or to carry on, to continue.
Yeah, you don't need to do that. You have sixty five days to make your decision from the time you chose it, so. We need to continue it.
Okay, so your motion.
I would like, um, if you don't mind having a small discussion with regard to some direction as to which way you guys are leaning. As far as that language, because it did go back and forth a lot in the IT, get a filter where everyone's making pick it off. I mean, maybe you don't know where you are yet.
Well, I think the idea of the schools, like a beauty school or whatever, um, that we had talked about, um, they they talked about, uh, hair salons, you know, and a day spa or whatever. I think as far as the personal services, I think it has to be defined a little bit more. My my fear is that we get into sort of, uh, dark space of personal services and we hear a lot about personal services and we don't want to have that type of business brought into town because it's basically illegal. Um, they're the top of the day is with the sex trap and being or whatever, and I know that that's not what the intention is of the application, but we want to make sure that we safeguard so that we don't open ourselves up to it, so to speak, and it's not something that can come through the back door. So I think, and I hate to be specific, but it is a special permit, and maybe we do have to be a little bit specific and direct and not. My problem with the proposal was the language of the, what was it? How do you say, similar artistic endeavors? And I think you could almost have to strike that, I don't know. If somebody has a business that's, uh, new and, you know, forward thinking, then I guess they could come report to the commission and see if they could fit into that zone. I don't, I, that's my take on it, but what does everyone else think?
So, Commissioner Miller, again, I I guess as worded here, I mean, it doesn't even mean the the purpose of proposal. I mean, I would not need this, I would not interpret this to allow a spa. It's not a school, so how do we capture that element of it?
It like, you know, the school, so it's gonna be a dance and parkour gate, all that crap. And I mean, I'm sure there's other things too that work in there, like maybe like a for kids, like a tie dye place where you bring your kid, and so I'd see that under the artistic endeavor. Where there is a lot of difference.
Or what if you have a yoga, uh, somebody who wants to start yoga? Um, is that fitting with the school? So I don't know how we, I mean, do we tell what can't be allowed in the zone? Is that easier or should that or does state Adam's making things? So that, well, at least I'm getting a direction.
The, this is an abstraction.
Just an abstraction. When we're reviewing certificates of zoning compliance for businesses coming in, personal services often taken to accommodate a lot of the nuances between businesses and so wording them in the regulations to try to, as Murray put, to make a laundry list. If you make the laundry list and you miss something, then it starts to be problematic. Or if there's one section that says, Attorney Sullivan, like that, one section where it says three things and then this section says four things, ah, well, is that that fourth one not allowed here? Because it happened to be a different commission at a different time, decades later. So insofar as reviewing individual personal services, that's something that staff often filter and then in the S P D D, it's it's further made more scrutiny by the special permit process as opposed to C C D two where personal services business committed to go very frequently without much ado, unless unless there's something like tattooing or something the commission has previously provided guidance on.
So my question would be, how does not, how does the existing requirement not allow a spa?
I was gonna say, so the the spa would generally, unless, you know, they usually give us a narrative. When someone comes in for a certificate of zoning compliance, we get a narrative. Those often will send that red flag that says, oh, we gotta, we gotta ask a couple more questions? Or, okay, it is as it appears, and a day spa would be a personal service business as would be allowed to be, generally speaking. They fall into that category, there's a very fine line between the, your typical beauty salon to the one that, you know, now offers facials and now offers, you know, they've kind of all evolved into calling themselves, or many, many have evolved into calling them state day spas, even though if I wanted a spa day.
So now, now I'm confused, why is, why is Tim here?
Because those are not from, currently, they're not listed uses for the S P D D zone. Those are currently, the the things listed for item B and item H are allowed in other commercial zones, but they're not allowed in the S P D D zone. And the the proposal is to allow these as they are allowed in other, other zones that have other, yeah, the rest of the listed uses are allowed, to have these listed as well in S P D D.
It's worth listening, asking to have B and H included in it.
Yes.
Alright, then I'm fine with it, what how it is.
Is this the same language that we see in the other zone where this?
I believe so, we have, I didn't, my book's not up here, but we have as Adam said, some different language in each zone because of the times when they were each implemented. You can almost read through, as an example, I had a, one, a funny thing with the laundromats. They're laundry ser, laundromats, one, oh, what's that word? It's another word, it was like a sixties term for a laundromat, and I had to look it up, and I am old. To know if it was the same thing or that actually meant something different. And so the the differences, for most part, our interpretations are generational differences as how they were written in each zone.
Pretty much a copy and paste then text.
So I believe he copied this, and testified that he copied this from the P S zones, the P S A and P S B zones, language wise, as opposed to say C C D ones.
So just citing the regulations, in general, that first part generally aligns with personal service references in other zones. And then the verbiage for studio and dance, I believe he referred to it as schools for profit, but in the C C D one and two, for example, one of the permitted site plan uses is studios, advanced photography, graphic design, painting, or similar artistic endeavors, so it's mirroring other language elsewhere. But the emphasis is schools for the sense of giving lessons.
Alright, so are we still continuing with, we're still continuing with the motion?
This is a special permit, so other endeavors have to go to us.
No, yeah.
And we gotta say yes or no anyway, so, so if it's something that's not in the scope of this, we're going to say no.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, having other stuff, other.
As long as we have a safeguard though, we just, we just have.
It's gotta come back to us.
See, someone wanted to come in for a make your own flamethrower class, so you'd have to come before your commission first.
Oh, we already signed out.
Like axe, axe, or something like that, so.
Or come in with one of those.
A shooting range.
Make your own axe and use it like a sword.
So the word artistic kind of lends itself to limiting it to a certain line endeavors, like like a drawing school, I would not consider it to be in that, so my suggestion would just be to strike.
Okay, so you would say strike artistic, so similar endeavor, that might be a better way of doing it. Alright, so do we have, we just want to round?
Want to include or not include fitness, because that's something that's likely to go down there. I'd hate to not have it listed there and then not be able, I guess, it's a hypothetical throw upstairs.
Doesn't matter, personal service business.
I I I don't know, that's why I didn't point it out to them, because.
I would say, yeah.
Fitness is, is got a few different categories that we put it under. We have fitness, like a gym, we have personal trainers in a different. And yoga studios fall into dance usually, I believe that's the way we've been interpreting.
All comes in that special permit and.
So is fitness.
Got to go last and say yes or no.
We got the.
Do you think?
I don't know. I. I'd have to look, personally, I'd have to go back and look at how we can interpret it, whether they're otherwise listed. So if it's an otherwise listed item, if it's listed someplace else as Attorney Sullivan, it's might get out.
So we should continue, what you see in fitnesses?
Do a quick search or no?
Okay, we could look at the critical next series, are we starting to warp to the intent of the.
So I agree, Josh. Warp drive.
You do go to Brolin, you got, you got big words.
Health or fitness, clubs, health or fitness clubs are listed separately.
Health or fitness center is often the, the kind of listed throughout.
Okay, so health and fitness.
Center of the center talks more to the the scale than the studio, yoga studio, the dance studio, karate studio.
So how is fitness studio?
Schools for profit, yeah, the studio of of personal, personal training, personal training is different, so different than the edge, the edge being the fitness center, the.
I thought the edge was sitting back there, but I have a big audience.
Okay, so what do we have here, powerhouse?
I'm sorry.
Powerhouse is the local here, so, you know, that's, that's the fitness center versus the personal trainer being a personal service or.
Daycare school.
Daycare school.
Okay, alright.
There, I believe listed separate.
So what are we doing here, are we, are we continuing so that we can elaborate? Or if you want to make the motion, do you have a motion for the motion, motion?
I personally think that the, because it's special permitted, it does list the.
That's really.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Is that without the word artistic?
Without the word artistic.
Yes.
Okay, we have the motion to approve, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Miller has a second, we have further discussion. Alright, we're gonna do a roll call on this, all right?
Aye.
Diane Dorsey?
Come back to me, please, I know.
Okay, Tim Sigmar? Brian Rogan?
Aye.
Andrew Legnani?
Aye.
Steve Biella Jr.? Chairman Beale?
I'll say aye, this is gonna be a special.
Diane Dorsey?
I'll say aye, but I would like to, I guess I'm not confident that we've done the best we can with this. And.
How you make me sad?
Well, we can do better, and I think we might want to look at comparing.
Why?
She's, she's not gonna. She's not gonna head off the microphone.
We might want to compare the verbiage for the different sections to provide for some more consistency.
So if I can adjust, I just a tad, so the language was proposed by an applicant, so we don't therefore necessarily have that kind of ability to, or charge to modify more comprehensively, but that is something that is in the laundry list of items of cleanup of the regulations that hopefully, looking forward as we move to P O C B and then possibly have some recommendations for changes, I think some of you may have been around for the two thousand three P O C B where major changes were made right after it. It did some, some of that kind of cleanup and that's the time when you'll be right for that. So, yeah, do a project, and I will tell you that when I'm confident is on the list already to get consistent from zone to zone, so you know, was this one specifically excluded in this particular zone? And, but included to be allowed in other zones.
So we saw a type of housekeeping.
Yeah, that would be more housekeeping as far as amendments to the regulations. So that carries.
I voted aye, okay, alright, I did.
That was unanimous.
Yep, unanimous and, so keep working on it, okay, the last is a special permit with the site plan application. James Cassidy, help us see here, I think that's the same task before construction of thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five foot building to be used as a truck repair facility with parking on motor display related site improvements of two fifty-sixth street and road at map ten-four, block eighty-three C, lot six A zero, where it's rich in P S A and zone and seventy-three Woodland Road in the B T one, so, okay, so we circled on that.
No, Miss.
Okay, yes, Mr. Sigmar stepping down and Mr. Zarabozzo, is he still with us?
I'm still here.
Aye, okay, welcome to the club, and so let's debate what we would like to do with this. We have some feedback from the commission? Mr. Legnani, Mr. Zarabozzo, Mr. Biella, what's the flavor of the commission? We had a lot of talk and a lot of input. Oh, oh, well, Ms. Dorsey, okay, Ms. Dorsey would like to talk.
I'm trying to keep you to ten o'clock.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments. With the conditions discussed earlier, specifically the elimination of any outdoor P A systems, the elimination of display of motor vehicles on the grassy strip along either roadway and lighting to be worked on with staff so that it does not trespass unreasonably onto other properties. Enhanced landscaping on the grassy areas, and I will remain silent on the bump.
Bonding.
The display.
Or a C V A application. Isn't that the subject to staff? Yeah.
I didn't care what that was.
Oh, I was just curious, yeah, bonding and then C V A, that's the application to.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be a condition, that's more of a procedure, they have to do that.
Alright.
Does have to.
I think I'm done with my motion. Alright, we have the mo, we have the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, that is, okay, thank you. Second by Mr. Rogan, do we have further discussion of the commission? Okay, roll call, vote.
I was looking at who was the paper.
We have people here.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's.
Okay, George Miller?
Aye.
Diane Dorsey?
Aye.
Brian Rogan?
Aye.
Peter Zarabozzo?
Aye.
Andrew Legnani?
Aye.
Steve Biella Jr.?
Aye.
And Chairman Beale?
Aye. Okay, alright, so, no problem, thank you, and well done, job well done. We look forward to your. We look forward to the expansion and all the improvements, excellent, thank you, good night. Alright, so next we have the commissioner business, which is, of course, oh, welcome back, Mr. Sigmar, and I'll ask Mr. Zarabozzo to step down, okay? Actually, this is just commission business, so you guys had input as well. We have the correspondence and matters of interest, which is the director of economic development, matters of interest. Oh, there, to our director.
Hello there, hopefully we can make this quick, I've asked Adam to give a five-minute timer, so I don't go beyond five minutes. Have somebody interested in one of the former farm properties on Chamberlain Highway? They would like to do a nursery, essentially would sell to public, looking at our existing agricultural regs for the P O D, which is agricultural regs, it looks like the majority of it would fit. A couple of small things just to mention to you, you'd be amenable to looking to change it. One is the sign, size sign is six work feet. I would this, to increase that, if you're gonna have a business where you're gonna have retail customers, if we look to increase a sign, there's this portion in there that you can't sell anything if it's not grown in Berlin. It was kind of weird, gentleman I'm talking to has a nursery in adjacent towns. The problem is, is the other locations don't have a retail piece to it, so it'd be Connecticut grown when we brought to Berlin for sale. The other piece would be, let's see here, it looks like within, we have farm stands and farm stores, so it's a little confusing to me, but it seems to me that if you're selling things that are ancillary to the plants, pots, fertilizer, weed killer, that would fit within it, so just, no.
Getting into garden center.
That's, that's, the problem is where does one begin and one end? Because it.
Question I've asked a lot of us.
Because I mean, literally, the raising of crops at other plants for profit is a committed use. And then within the farm stores. So we can take a look at that, but I mean, the more importantly is if we think the retail nursery would fit within the agricultural and in the P O D zone. It is somebody that would do, the majority of growing on site, that would also be growing in other Connecticut communities. Again, not looking for a yes we love it, no we hate it, but just, it would be a reuse of an existing property that was formerly used for this, they would purchase it, they would upgrade it. It would be something that they would hopefully take a couple of properties and really upscale them. It would be a destination, but also would use the land out there for agriculture, which I think is what the intention was of the P O D zone if we weren't gonna get big office tenants. Already invested into a location in Connecticut, so I know this is because, this is not a five-minute, this is gonna be their main location where they're gonna have the retail and the like, we just need to between the language to fit what works for them, but also this commission, but it's more of a, what do you think type of discussion? How am I doing, I think I have a moment left.
Yeah, commissioners.
I like it.
Thank you.
I like it, I think they have to actually produce something there, though.
No, 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 the the majority's gonna be reduced on site, it's just the fact that it's, I think it's written in here, no, no more than ten percent from, not from Berlin, for instance, they have something, I think, in infield.
I think we should be more flexible than ten percent, but if that's what it says, that's.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, if it's, if it's something where we have to take a look at the language afterward, it's fine, it's more of, does the concept work, the small, again, if the signage is the worst problem we have, we'll figure it out.
I love farm land.
It's more of an inception.
I like farm land.
Again, yeah, I mean, I think what he's looking to do too is to to do it really like, it would be a lot of outside, maybe some stuff in. Yeah, I mean, I think what he's looking to do too is to, to do it really like it would be, a lot of outside, maybe some stuff in greenhouses, but we're not talking about. Big agro business, this is a family owned business that I would be very proud to have.
Yeah, I, I think it sounds good, I mean, what you guys think, Mr. like nine, Mr. Zarabosa? Give me your chance to children. Okay, Mr. Okay, Mr. like nine, how you doing and, and how do you feel about it? I'm looking to see if you have a comment you'd like to share. I don't think he does. Okay, so.
See his smiling face.
I see his smiling face, I can't hear him.
You have on there, I thought you said something, but I'm not sure.
I think period.
No, I, I, no, I, I said, I think it's a no brainer, it's a great idea.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, geez, we get the no brainer part, thanks. Alright, so I think you've got the green light to pursue it and uh we're pretty o- open to the idea and I, I think it's great to keep that uh, that farmland going.
Awesome, well, once the discussion continues, I will let you know um where things are and then. We'll see what we can do as it currently stands and then if there needs to be tweaks from there, we can have them maybe come in. Get approval and then work on the signage and the other things, but I'll, I'll talk to them and then we'll have a bigger discussion.
Outstanding, alright. Alright, next up is a special of the POCD twenty twenty three.
Can I throw something else in first, just because I see that Mr. Bajorski is on, on the call as.
And I thought he just.
Well, and maybe he is.
Commission as well.
But he had reached out to me um to note that the housing authority is gonna be, is still pursuing. The senior housing project that was approved a few years back, actually five years ago. Um, for Percival.
Oh, yeah, the person.
Um, and so he will be coming back with a request for an extension of those approvals. And working with the um town council, town manager's office, various others. But I see he's on the line and I just didn't know whether you wanted to see if he had something to say or not, I'm not sure, but that request will be coming shortly.
Okay, Mr. Bajorski, is there anything that you've been most patient with the commission, sorry?
Well, I've been here on other business, but um, really glad, I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. Um, I would, what I envision here is I would like an extension, even if it's a short term extension from the commission. On the site plan approval, at this point, there are no changes to the site plan um moving forward. We are gonna change some uh design elements in terms of um the exterior. Coverings, uh, we're looking at some solar panels that actually mirror, that look like bricks, they're colored. Um, so I'll be bringing some more information to you on those items. But what we need is for June eighteenth application date for community development block grant, we need to have site plan approval. And i- if we could just extend the site plan out um administratively uh for a period of time, um, I would appreciate that. And then we'd be coming back in around September with new site, uh, new special permit application and. You know, some amendments to the site plan in terms of the exterior finishes that we had um presented earlier. Um, we're also going with a geothermal application, or we're thinking about going with a geothermal application. So we're researching, you know, what's gonna be required there uh with respect to the inland wetlands and also uh planning and zoning. Uh, if those need, if the drill or the well sites need to come in front of planning and zoning. Um, this is, we're trying to design a, basically a carbon neutral, for lack of a better term, a facility. So um, but for the short term, I just need an extension of these site plans that were previously approved through um. You know, maybe a year, the tops, uh, that'll get us through um the community development block grant process.
So I'll prepare that as an agenda item for June third.
Alright, so that will be on the.
Extension request.
Yeah.
And give you the, the possible date, the extension, maximum extension time and then you can determine.
Okay.
And like I said, we'll be, we'll be coming in front of the commission with uh re- review, uh, I should say refreshed. Site plan and a refreshed uh special permit application uh to address any changes. But right now, the footprints of the buildings and the style of the buildings and the type, the room dimensions and all that, all that's staying the same. The only changes, like I say, I anticipate are with the geothermal and with the uh solar panel exterior.
Okay, so Lauren's gonna do a little bit of research and we're gonna get you on that June third agenda and hopefully we'll put her, put him up. I don't know, can we move him to the front so he doesn't?
We can build some condition business at the beginning.
Yeah, we'll try to get you to the front of the agenda, so this way you'll have your answer right away.
I appreciate that.
She just needs to work on the language for you, okay?
Nope, that's fine, thanks, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and I'll, I'll see you on June third.
Okay, June third, good night. Yeah, exactly, uh, what with discussion of the.
Okay, so the POCD, um, Jim and I did a quick synopsis today on where we're at and I think it um is similar to last time we've. Put to, we've gotten three quotes, or rather three proposals, we're looking to set up that interview committee to. Interview all three of them because three came in, makes sense to, they're very different from each other. Um, we've set up a share file with um. A lot of the draft data that we pulled together and all the maps and everything we have, so that they have access to that. Um, documents that have been developed over the last ten, ten to twenty years as well as much more recently. And so that they can use some of that instead of recreating wheel, which is gonna be really nice on some of those we put together for grants for. Um, other programs with the state, et cetera, so we had to do the data collection anyway, so may as well keep using the same stuff. Somebody else redo it. Um, that, so the priorities right now are an interview committee, the intact was um most likely. Jim Mahoney and myself on that committee and that either one or three, I guess, others. So, and coming from the POCD committee, most likely, which is basically this board. Um, the uh. Yeah, and the consultant has the access to the draft data, that's, that's about where we are, so we want to just keep. And does anyone have uh any, I guess? Yeah, I guess I should, I'll leave it to Mr. Rogan. I'm good, I'm good.
Alright, so. Alright, so I guess motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn and it's only uh. What time is it?
Ten twenty eight.
Uh, we have a motion adjourn by Mr. Rosso, and second by Mr. Rogan, so further discussion, always a favor. You guys online, alright, Mr. Zarabosa.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much, everyone had a great night, we'll see you soon, June third.